A Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 4:30 PM on Monday, July 1st, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order and invite Pastor Justin Baldwin from the Harbor Church up to say our invocation. We will please remain standing and we'll do the pledges.
Will you bow your head with me while we pray? Let's pray. Father God in heaven, Lord, we come to you this day. Lord, would you please let who you are be made known to us and to this city? Lord, let your perfect rule and authority grow in my life, in our lives, more and more as we learn to trust you. Let us be increasingly surrendered to your perfect will, Father. Lord, you know each of us so intricately. And, Lord, we know you want each of us to come to you with our needs. Lord, help us remember that. Help me remember that. Lord, as this group gathers, as our leaders gather, we just ask for your wisdom. Lord, we ask that everything that is talked about and decided upon here would be pleasing to you. And, Lord, we just confess also that we are not perfect. We have not loved you with our whole hearts, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves perfectly. And so, Lord, we just want to thank you for the forgiveness you made available to us in Jesus. And, Lord, it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Yeah, they're on a camping trip or something. Item four, communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. A few cards here. Ron Lovely?
I've got the, I'm gonna have the cards here. I'll do one minute on the yellow card and then done when it's ready. Thanks.
Okay, I'm Ron Lovely. I live at One Whittier, and I want to talk about the bond for flood control. My advice to you is to tell the truth to the voters about what it costs and let them decide. Two people were on both the subcommittee and the citizen advisory team, and we know the full story. Subcommittee gave us a technical solution that would save 1,000 homes and retain the natural meandering of Clear Creek. The cost analysis was not finished. It should never have been characterized as finished. It should never have happened. We all expected we were gonna keep talking about it. By now, you all know and understand that the $32 million figure did not meet the 25% matching. You know that the $32 million did not have an algorithm for buyouts. It just didn't exist. There were no property counts, or contingencies, or uncertainties. We knew that it was not enough and that it would require excavating on private properties. You know that the $32 million did not account for inflation. We did not get that far in our discussions. You know that no consideration was given for the drainage strategy to be integrated into the design of a park. The citizen advisory team picked up where the subcommittee left off and finished the cost analysis. The detailed analysis shows the cost to be $190 million. The cost basis is provided for every line item. The algorithm for the buyouts is provided. Property counts and contingencies are included. 10 homes are saved for every one purchase. Inflation is accounted for at 3% per year, which is, it might still be a little low compared to the literature, but it is in the right range. No one wants an ugly ditch, so the plan requires the design of a park and then integrating drainage into the park. To make it work, you must meet the 25% requirement. Results in a bond amount of $47.5 million. I'm like most taxpayers, I have no idea what that big number means. I generally vote no for big numbers. I would, however, vote for it if you told me it would cost the average household about $1.75 per month at the end of five years, $3.50 per month at the end of 10 years, and say $5.26 per month when the project gets finished in 15 years. That's what it costs, the average household, for the 25% cost share. You get $190 million for that, which is what you need. If someone thinks that $5.26 per month will be too much for them 15 years from now, then they should vote no. If they do not know how a watershed works and they don't care about flooding, then they should vote no. There's no benefit to telling voters it will cost less than what it will really cost. That does not help taxpayers. Keep it simple, keep it honest, tell the truth, give the voters an honest proposition, and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Lovely? You get the last word in your family, Gail.
Good afternoon. I've served on the citizens advisory team focused on Clear Creek Drainage, and I know tonight's discussion of potential bonds is really important. Without sufficient funding, a significant challenge like drainage of Clear Creek cannot be achieved. The Clear Creek Drainage CAT, based on the important work of the city's drainage subcommittee, determined a budget which accounts for costs over 15 years. We know this must include inflation, land value increases, and more. We came to our work seriously and worked hard to balance costs and benefits. We worried less about politics and more about what we believe will work and will be good for Friendswood citizens going forward for the long term. We provided to the larger CAT team our proposal, as well as the materials backing up our decisions, which are all on the city website for CAT. We brought forward a budget number which will allow for the completion of this challenging, yet doable, project. This is not the sort of thing you can shortchange from the beginning, as it will condemn the project to shortsightedness and failure. We know that Clear Creek Drainage must be tackled and not be underfunded or funded by potential other sources. We know that causing the project to fail by not providing sufficient matching dollars for this $180 million project cannot be an option. Doing a part of this project will not provide a little help. It's like building a bridge halfway across a river, or crossing a chasm in little steps. It is time to take the leap and do the work. We must start and finish this project to achieve the desired results, saving homes in Friendswood from floodwaters and providing public green spaces for citizens to enjoy. Asking the citizens of Friendswood to potentially spend their hard-earned money to improve the quality of life for all the citizens of Friendswood is a serious request. Please know we take seriously our role in this process. The price of this work is less than you might think, and I know Ron just told you, but $1.75 a month, $3.50 a month, $5.26 a month, it's a total over 30 years of something like $2,000 if your home is worth $300,000. This is a small ask. I believe it is important that you, the City Council, put forward to the citizens a bond proposition for Clear Creek Drainage which can be successful and is clear on what the perceived costs may be. Don't sugarcoat or give smaller numbers to minimize sticker shock. Let the citizens know the cost to fix the problem and let them make an informed decision in the voting booth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Lynda Jenkins?
Thanks for letting me speak. This is not my normal range of comfort, so bear with me. I'm Lynda Jenkins, and I live on Whittier Drive in Quakers Landing. Just as a background, we're fairly new here. We retired here from North Texas, the Dallas area, the summer before Harvey to be near our daughter and her family. We were excited to find a nice home in Friendswood. Friendswood came highly recommended to us, and we could have lived elsewhere, but we chose Friendswood because it seemed friendly, and still is. But unfortunately, 14 months later, Harvey happened, and practically everything we owned was broken, ruined. It's very devastating, especially at our ages, but we feel so lucky because there's so many in our neighborhood still living in garages, still living in their homes while they're being worked on and just working on them when they get extra money. And so, we feel lucky to be, after a year, we were back in our home. I joined the CAT Committee because we had found out during, or after Harvey, that there had been so many proposals made in the past to fix Clear Creek, and none of those were acted on that we could ever, I mean, I read like five of the proposals since, I think, the 80s, maybe the 70s, and none of those had ever been carried out. I will tell you that everyone in our neighborhood is still on edge. When Clear Creek, when we have a big rainstorm, we have certain people who patrol the creek at night just for our safety, and we chat back and forth. But I'm speaking as a flood survivor and speaking for my neighbors who can't be here. I'd like to urge the city leaders to let the Clear Creek Drainage be your top priority and, in turn, make it your legacy to fix Clear Creek and make it safe for those who live here and those who will come later. And I'm urging you to fully support the CAT Drainage Bond Proposal, the whole entire proposal, so it will have a chance to be fixed forever, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. A couple things I'd like to speak on today if I can. One is, I've noticed, I've read a little bit about history about the downtown Friendswood group and how they have exercised part of Friendswood to be tax-free, but it's really not tax-free. What that does is that it increases taxes for every other property owner. So maybe those areas that are designated tax-free are tax-free for them, businesses, et cetera. However, for the rest of the taxpayers, property owners, we have to pick up that tax. So it's not really a tax exempt zone, it just shifts the tax, property tax, to other property tax owners in Friendswood, and that's never correct. The second thing I always speak on is, I noticed in the last council meeting, there was a kind of a chart on the population for Friendswood from, I think it was from 1990 through today, and the premise was that Friendswood had grown 3% every year since 1990. However, here are the facts. The official census was first taken in 1970 in Friendswood, as Friendswood was incorporated in 1960s. The 1980, oh, the population in 1970 was 56, 75. 1980 census, the population almost doubled to 10,700. By the 1990 census, Friendswood's population doubled to 22,800. The 2000 census saw a slower growth to 29,000, still a healthy over 20% increase, or 2% on average per year during the decade, which is contrary to what was presented by Ron, who said the growth was 3% per year during that time, so that was untrue. 2010 census saw an increase to 35,800 from the previous decade, or a little less than a 2% increase, again, contrary to what Ron pointed out in his little presentation, supposedly from the CAG. Presently, the population can only be estimated to be around 38,000 to 40,000 until the 2020 census. Why is this important? Why is knowing the population of Friendswood important for CAG, for the mayor and council? Well, the reason why is that for those who want to saddle Friendswood taxpayers with more debt with these bond proposals, then the truth should be revealed. First, the city has not grown 3% per year since 1990. That's a bold-faced lie. I didn't, if I would have known about that before Ron presented, I was on the CAG group in the financial department, or financial group. He would, if I would have known that, I would have called him on it during the CAG meeting, but I didn't know about it until Ron presented it, so that is a lie. Second, with this limited growth, further debt should not be issued, in my opinion, because we cannot handle that kind of debt. So, thanks.
Thank you. Sarah Van Riper? Sarah?
I'm a citizen of Friendswood, 20-plus years, so I love the town, and I was one of the flood victims over in Laurelfield, your old neighborhood, Brett. And I just wanted to say that I volunteered on the CAT Committee because I want to make sure that we do something about drainage and not just talk about it. Because like, you've heard others say that we've had proposals for years and years and we just don't get anything done. So we don't want to be known as the city that floods. And so I joined the CAT, you know, committee and for drainage, and we did dig into the numbers that the drainage subcommittee had provided with, like, you were on that team, Steve. And so, I just wanted to say that we really didn't just go out to try to increase the number. We actually just dug into the details of the basis of the cost estimate and found, like, we left the contingency the same. They had 30% contingency for digging the dirt, we left that 30% the same. The only, you know, some of the changes that we corrected was like the cost share. They had it at 20%, and we found out that actually it's the 25% cost share that the citizen, you know, Friendswood has to put up to get federal money. And so we just made that correction. And then on some, on the buyouts, the land prices were so low that it just, we brought it back up to what the average cost of those prices of those houses are along the creek, and a different price for the Galveston county side from the Harris county side. So we took into account what the actual prices of the houses were. And then the last thing was the, having that escalation fee because the cost over a 15-year long-term project is gonna take more money as, you know, the years go on versus these short-term projects. And so, that's how price went up. It's not because we added all these wish lists or anything like that. It's still just getting the same job done. And then, one other thing is that during the CAT discussions, we got thrown, the Food Lion project got thrown into the mix with the drainage project. And I don't think we should mix those two together because the Food Lion is not for saving the flooding in Friendswood. I mean, it got flooded, yes, but it doesn't mean the Food Lion project is not to save flooding in Friendswood. So we should take that out because it's, you know, it's estimated at $2 million, but we know the price is actually $9 million, and they're waiting for FEMA money. We may never get that match. And so I think we need to take that off the table, the Food Lion project, from the, separate it from the drainage committee. And are you about to get red flag me? And 30 seconds is that Clear Creek, the Clear Creek Green Belt is gonna be so awesome when we build that to look like parkland, that all the citizens can come see, not just the private owners of those properties along the creek, that we all can enjoy it. It's gonna be a jewel for our city, so that drainage is gonna look awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item five is work session. First topic, traffic study update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall, a little over, or less than a year ago, we commissioned a citywide traffic study in which we hired Freezing Nichols to do a study of our traffic throughout the community. Renee's got Megan, you can introduce her if you'd like. Sorry.
And sorry, friend, as Mo was saying, we had tasks with him back in 2018 to evaluate the city for the traffic conditions, and Brown and Gay Engineering was the consultant who was awarded and is with Megan Cirx. We'll be, I'm gonna defer to her to give you all an update, and it's taken different conditions within the city, not only within our roadways, local roadways, but also Tech Dot roadways as well. And fortunately also, we've recently met with Tech Dot to give them some information and garner some back as well. What we're aiming to do is do a presentation, it's a, just an update, take the information back from yourselves and any feedback, and then our next goal is to do a public forum meeting with the public to garner their input back as well in continuation of putting a final traffic study together.
My apologies, Megan's with the far better engineering firm in Brown and Gay, not Freezing Nichols.
Thank you for that clarification. I also think it's the far better engineering firm, but I think I would get in trouble if I didn't say that. So, thank you guys for selecting us to help you with this study. We're very excited. We have a lot of really wonderful information to share with you, and I think that you'll find it very informative and help form your plan for the coming years. So what we've done, why we are here, we wanted to start with understanding how the city of Friendswood is operating from a traffic standpoint. We all know that without mobility, we have an inability to grow and to, and have that economic boom that we really want to see. So we started by evaluating the existing traffic characteristics and trying to just understand what's happening. We took that further, and we started looking at projected growth and impacts to local roads. It's not just enough to say, well, here's where we are today, let's fix it. We have to look ahead and look to the future, and that's what we did as part of this study. We wanted to create a model that actually showed us what we were seeing, and so we could project and model the future conditions and get an accurate sense of what that's going to mean for this great city. We did look at three horizon years, so five years, 10 years, and 20 years, so 2025, 2030, and 2040. We projected across all of those and tried to come up with a series of improvements at each of the stages that are both feasible and obtainable and are going to grow and reflect what you need to accommodate what we're talking about in that area. We've also, at this point, determined some, we're gonna call it preliminary mitigation, meaning we've kind of made an assessment of, here's what we think needs to happen. Now, this is nothing without input, and so this is not final. There's nothing like hardened stone. I want to make that very clear, that this is dependent on feedback from the city and the citizens and everyone, and it all needs to get incorporated back into this master plan that we're looking at. So how did we do this? We started by collecting data, and we collected a lot of it. We did turning movement counts, which means we studied the AM and PM peak hours at 36 locations across the city. We did 24-hour counts as well, wanted to see how the variation along the day went. We did a physical inventory of all of the intersections, so we needed to understand how the lanes were set up. Where were turn lanes? How long were they? Where do they need to be extended? And that's part of what we're looking at. And then we also took into account and met with the city engineering department to determine what projects are coming, because without that, we can't accurately account for the growth that we're expecting. So all of the black dots on here are where we took counts. We also had someone come out and drive your corridors. It's not just enough to say, oh, here's the numbers. We actually wanted to see what that translated to when you're driving across your city. And so we did it during our AM, midday, and peak hour times, and really kind of established what was normal and how it increased when you were under your peak periods. And it just gives us a sense to calibrate our model, make sure we're not projecting something that's not accurate. When we talk about future projections, one of the key things we have to do is we have to grow the traffic and we have to project it forward. Now, what we determined, and we did this by looking at both Tech Dot future projections, so Tech Dot looks ahead 20 years, and they come up with their own numbers, as well as HGAC, the Houston-Galveston Area Council. So between those two data sources, as well as historical data from some of the Tech Dot facilities, we were able to more or less break the area down into two zones, and from that establish a growth rate that could be reasonably supported as we go through for 2025, 2030, and 2040. And it's not really a fair statement to be able to say, we're gonna grow 2% for the next 20 years. The reality is, you grow for a while, and you tend to level off a little bit and then maybe a little bit more, and that's because your available space is no longer available. It's already developed, and you can only grow where you have space. But where we still have growth is where we have redevelopment and typically densification that occurs with that. And so that's what we took into account with our kind of zonal breakdown. And then we also took a look at what the local streets were doing, because those will have a different growth rate than some of your corridors, based on what development is available and what free space you do have. So we did that by analyzing all of the Tech Dot numbers, the HGAC numbers, and came up with a median rate that we felt really fit the city. So when we talk about how something is operating, we do it in a grade system, just like in school. We grade you from an A to an F, and As are good and Fs are bad, and we try to avoid the Fs as much as possible. Typically, acceptable levels of service are classified A through D, and you know, D is still technically passing, so we operate in the same way. And what we actually found is, city of Friendswood is not doing too bad. There's a couple of key intersections that aren't great, but we have some ideas to help it be better. So, this is a long presentation, and for the sake of brevity, I'm going to, in some cases, focus on some specific improvements that I think are really beneficial, and others that are maybe just more timing-based for traffic signals, kind of go through them a little more quickly. Feel free to stop me at any point if you want me to back up or talk about anything, but there's a lot of info here. I know you guys have had an opportunity to review it. This particular version has a couple of very minor tweaks, just in case you're wondering why something may look just a hair off, there's only four or five minor changes, so no surprises. So if we start by looking at 518, we broke this down initially into three corridors, and if you, as you all know, you have three major Tech Dot corridors that traverse the city. That's 518, 528, and 2351, as well as your local network grid. So when we did this, what we found were most of the problem areas existed along the Tech Dot facilities. And so while that became the focus, we wanted to make sure we did not forget or minimize the local streets, and that was something that was really important for us, and we are still going into some of the inner details of specific movements and places. But what we're seeing here today is that your intersections are pretty good. This is the 518 corridor at 2351, that's your worst intersection at the moment in this picture. It's a D in the morning and E in the afternoon. When we look ahead to 2025, what we have to do to maintain acceptable levels of service is extend turn lanes. And that's actually a project that's already in the works with Tech Dot. Tech Dot sat back and said, yeah, we heard you guys before, we know this is a problem, we're working on it, we think we can get this out of a maintenance contract and get this incorporated. But we would be remiss if we didn't mention it, which is why it's here and in the study. We also are recommending a southbound right turn lane be added, because what we discovered is a lot of your turning movements are your heavy volumes in places. If those improvements are left in place in 2030, we recommend a westbound right turn lane. It's a very high volume again, and it's just one of those things that helps add capacity, excuse me, through the intersection. Also, the green dots are optimized timings, and there's gonna be green dots on every single page. What that means is we've gone in and recommended that Tech Dot on their corridors, and locally, we look at how the traffic signal is functioning. So, without getting into a long labor discussion of how we come up with it, there is a cycle length, it makes it work really well, and we went ahead and evaluated those and saw what we need to do as a corridor to make some recommendations, both to the state and to the city, for how they can improve the timings and keep the efficiency moving. timings and keep the efficiency moving. 2040 at this intersection is, again, a further extension of the turn lanes, but what's additional here is a future widening of 2351. Now, when I'm talking about the improvements, what we tried to set up were short-term improvements that didn't necessarily require right-of-way. We could accomplish it with signal timing improvements, lengthening turn bays, working within existing right-of-way, because right-of-way can be very costly and very timely for acquisition. 2030, we do start creeping into, well, if we need a little bit of space here, a little bit of space there, what can that look like? And 2040, we kind of took a little bit of a pie in the sky approach. What do we need? And let's not restrict ourselves and let's see if we can make it feasible. And that was kind of our methodology for the various intersections. So, as we travel a little further south down 518, most of those intersections are functioning pretty well right now. Friendswood Link is the one that's got an E in the afternoon. Initially, we think we can improve things just by optimizing timings on this corridor and on Sunset. 2030, we'd recommend dedicated turn lanes northbound on 518 into Friendswood Link. And 2040, we'd just be keeping up with the timings and doing an optimization as we go. Now, the other piece that's shown here that comes in later is, as part of the 2040 improvements, we do recommend the construction of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, which I know is already planned to an extent. We certainly did not try to reinvent the wheel. We built everything off of your MTFP plan, your major thoroughfare plan. You've already have that, it's already established and that's the great building blocks and that's what we're showing. So, what we were able to do in this is, when that is built and connected, we think 30% of the traffic will move over to it and alleviate some of the congestion along 18.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
On the 2351, 2030 and 2040, Tech Dot, it's my understanding that if we put the block culvert in by the elementary school that ran to Chigger Creek, or Cowards Creek, that we would qualify for Tech Dot to come in and make 2351 a four-lane road. Now, I know that you said that you had visited with Tech Dot about that and you said just now in your suggestions that 2351 should be a four-lane road, something to the effect like 518 is, maybe even have medians in the thing. Did they give you any indication, or Mo, have they ever given you any further indication after we put in that bulk block culvert, that they were willing to do a four-lane road all the way to Pearland City Limits, which would be just past Baker Road?
The short answer is yes, we just don't have a timeframe on it. It's not a project that's currently funded in any.
But that's in this report.
Correct. As a recommendation that, and Tech Dot's in agreement, that the roadway needs to be expanded to a four-lane boulevard, but we just don't have it funded yet.
So, one of the things we found with our Tech Dot meeting is, they were very receptive to the improvements that we were putting forth, which included, in some cases, significant widening down Tech Dot facilities. And while they may not have had it planned yet, they were very receptive to it. They wanted the information so they could start programming it and then we would start getting into how it was going to be funded. And one of the things we haven't done yet that is part of our study is, we will produce a cost estimate, as well as a benefit cost ratio, to help prioritize the projects for the city, because we all know money is not infinite, despite our big wishes.
When you did all your growth estimates, did you look at growth outside of our city that transits us, or did you just look at growth inside?
So, we focused on inside, but you can't only look in a vacuum. And so, one of the things that actually caused our bubble to be split was Future Grand Parkway. And even though it actually only touches city of Friendswood in a tiny little corner, that's going to bring additional growth to the southern half, which is why we're experiencing a higher growth rate in the southern portion of the city rather than the northern.
I didn't say it at the outset, but one of the reasons why we funded this study was so that we wouldn't continually have to look to Tech Dot to do a study and evaluate things for us in order to put it in their queue to accomplish. If we had our own model and our own ability to evaluate these things, we can pursue solutions far faster than waiting on Tech Dot.
Very good. So, moving forward, as we keep traveling down 518, one of the worst intersections in the city, it should be no surprise, is 518 at 528. It's one of the two major intersections of two large Tech Dot facilities and it moves a lot of traffic. So, what we're initially projecting for 2025, which we think we can accomplish with existing space, is adding a dual left turn southbound. This just helps move those volumes through and pick up that capacity. Later, we would look at adding additional turn lanes east and west as well in 2030, as well as northbound left turn, or right turn lanes where we can. And then ultimately in 2040, widening 528 all the way to 45. And that's a big undertaking and it's not meant to be taken lightly. But the point of this is that, when we start hitting the 2040 volumes, you start reaching a point where there's a couple of options and one of them is widening and the other might be grade separation, which would be very impactful and not always in a good way. But we have to have a way to be able to have capacity and move the volume until technology has figured out how to keep up with us. And there's too many unknowns right now with autonomous vehicles and what that means and connectivity and all of that good stuff. So, not to say that we're not thinking about it, but it's very hard to account for what the network's going to look like at that point. So, with that, while we can plan for it, this plan should also evolve with you and your city's needs over time. So, if we keep moving down south, these intersections are functioning pretty well. 2025 is just timing improvements, 2030, 2040 is the same. If we move over to the east a little bit and take a look at Beamer and 2351, that is not a great intersection right now, but we do know that Harris County does have plans in place to let a project that will provide turn lanes. And so, we included those in the 2025 analysis, because that is something that is scheduled to be in place. That will allow the intersection to function at a much better level of service. And only timing improvements are needed 2030 after that. 2040, though, we go on to further recommend the finishing off of the Beamer section as the two-lane boulevard to connect further south down to where it currently terminates. And that adds just another north-south corridor for your city. 528, so one of the other, one of the other really terrible intersections right now is 528 at Berry Boulevard. Again, I feel like that's not any real surprise. So, what we actually looked at doing is, there's some available within it, that if we can widen for a short distance, we can create capacity that is brought through the intersection. And what that does is, it helps us make up for lost time, which is, hey, I'm on my cellphone and I'm not paying attention. You get more people through the intersection and once they're paying attention, they can collapse back down into our available space. We are also recommending dual movements in this location. 2030, we recommend the extension of Black Hawk Boulevard. And what that does is, it allows us to take some of the traffic that's currently at 528 and Berry Boulevard and some of that eastbound traffic will move to the connection to go south. And that helps alleviate some of the congestion we're seeing at that key intersection. And this is just further showing the widening of 528 all the way, all the way down. Looking at some of our more local street, or, I'm sorry, continuing further south on 528, those are functioning well and we just recommend keeping up with the timings as we go through it for 2025 and 2040. And here's where you can see the first part, where we start looking at Friendswood Lakes Boulevard being included and connected in 2040. And we also recognize, there's a lot of things outside your limits, so our study does stay within the city limits. But when we suggested it, we know it needs to be connected all the way to the north and to the south. But we understand an alignment has not been set and that is not part of the study at this time, to define that alignment. So, moving along 528 and going further south in the city, these intersections are functioning pretty well. But here's something that's not currently in the plan. We wanted to evaluate where Future Grand Parkway was coming. It's going to be a big deal when it gets built. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of connectivity planned for the city of Friendswood. Right now, there's one street that's planned to tie into Maple Leaf, which has an interchange planned as part of Grand Parkway. We really felt the need to identify a secondary connection further south in the city that would at least tie into a frontage road. And that would take a significant amount of coordination with Tech Dot and Grand Parkway to highlight that need, but we would be remiss if we didn't bring this up as something that the city should pursue in their talks with how they can connect the city. This line is just a line drawn on paper. It is not set by any means. It is simply identifying a connection from 528 to Grand Parkway. And I want to make that very clear, we're not proposing anything definitive. God, I've gotten in trouble for that before.
So, don't go out there and just buy all the property up right there.
Nope. Nope. Don't do that. You may not like what happens when they move it a couple hundred feet down the road instead, Looking at the internal streets, we really focused on Greenbrier and Sunset, kind of in that congested area where we've got the school traffic happening. And so, we actually are proposing as part of a widening solution for the high school, adding in a northbound left turn lane that helps move some of the congestion out of the way as part of your short-term improvements.
That's a very good street that they're buying.
It is. We understand. And that's why we wanted to include this. We are aware that you just put in your sidewalks and this proposal would move your sidewalks, which is less than ideal, but we're aware of the issues.
We've got a lot of complaints about those sidewalks already.
Well, you know, just five feet in either direction. You can have a middle turn lane now and be great. But the idea behind this is just that, if you give people a place to wait to make their left turn, your through traffic can still go by. And that's really what's causing a lot of your congestion, is you've got someone trying to turn into the high school and they can't do it. And so, we wanted to make sure we tried to address what we know are local issues, but part of the public meeting will be to raise other areas to our awareness that we maybe weren't tuned into. In the future, though, we do think it's going to operate reasonably well. We recommend in 2040, go ahead and making the connection for Greenbrier North, that little missing link.
Over the bridge?
Yes.
Over the bridge.
Over the bridge.
Yeah. That needs to happen in my opinion, in my opinion.
Well, and we did include it in here for future opportunities and as well as you can see the connection to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, to the west. So, this is by no means done, as I've mentioned, and we do have a couple of key next steps. So, there's a lot of data, we have a lot of information, but what our next steps we're going to do is, we are going to hold a public meeting. We want the public to see what we're doing. We want that transparency and we want the feedback. And from there, we take that back, we incorporate it into the study, make sure we can put together a comprehensive plan, and at the end of it, we come back and present our findings to y'all. So, if there are any other questions at this time, I'm happy to answer them. Please just let me know.
How will you do the public meetings? One public meeting is what you're thinking, or multiple meetings?
Yes. We would do one. It would be centrally located. Renee and I were actually just talking about that before, possibly having it here or maybe at the library. There are a couple of options we have on how we want to present it. One of the best options is an open house setting, where we set up a lot of graphics and we invite people over a window of time to come when they can and interact with us and ask us questions and give us their feedback. Another way we can do it is also with a more formal presentation, followed by that kind of Q and A time. But it really just depends and that's something that Renee and I are working out, to see what we think is best going to be.
The open house might be a good idea, especially if you extend that time period long enough so that people can come during the day, after work. You know, we have a lot of people that are interested, but they can't get, if you pick a specific time, you're going to cut out a section of people because, for whatever reason.
And Mo, just for the benefit of the residents of Friendswood, when we look at a 2040 study and we're fixing to have a 2020 census, we don't know exactly where we're going to fall in there, but at some point in time, we're going to be over 55,000 people. And I don't, I, just for the benefit of the residents, Tech Dot is going to require us as a city to take on more responsibility for our roads. So, I think uploading these plans before we lose Tech Dot's contributions would be important for all of us. So, if we know that this is going to happen in 2040, if we could push this up and get Tech Dot on the rack and get them going, then maybe they would be contributing to something that we would resolve instead of looking at this in 2040. That's my biggest fear. And I mean, just to update everybody on that, we are looking at a fact that, once we're over 50, or Steve knows this and everybody, once we're over 55,000, it's a different ballgame for our roads and streets. So, you might just kind of fill that in.
Sure. And that is a correct assessment. Realistically, the 2020 census will be around 42,000 to 43,000, so we're not going to exceed the 50,000 threshold in 2020. It is likely that we exceed it by the 2030 census, in which case, at that time, the, all the traffic signals become our ownership and maintenance responsibility and that is not an inexpensive operation, by any stretch of the imagination. There are some other requirements, non-traffic related, that we also incur, once we exceed the 50,000 in population. I'm in full agreement, let's get Tech Dot to do as many of these projects now as possible. Again, that's the purpose of this study, that we can highlight the benefits to it. Tech Dot's main concern is getting folks from point A to point B. They can care less what it does to developments along the side. So, if we can show them that these projects will achieve their grand purpose, we'll get their buy-in.
Thanks, Mo. I got a, I got a question. And maybe I missed it, but when you talked about 518 between 2351 and 528, did y'all assess the medians at all, if that may play an impact on, I know that probably a good question for keeping green space, but will that eliminate maybe any of the widening roads if that were to become an open space?
Potentially, yes. And so, it depends on how we want to handle any future widening. If you, if you take the opportunity to widen to what you have available in terms of right-of-way, often that can happen quicker. But you'll start losing your median space, your green, your pretty factor, which then forces your widening to the exterior, which in tip, along these corridors in particular means right-of-way acquisition, which can be very costly and very time-consuming and can be very impactful to your businesses. And so, it's going to become a weighted balance for what that looks like and what you want that to be. And that should absolutely play in the conversation for what's important.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see it anywhere in here and I know that when you look at that space and you start thinking about taking a few feet here or there and making those middle turn lanes, that could actually add quite a bit of speed without going and taking people's land.
There is a concern from a traffic engineering perspective, that medians are used as a mechanism to control access and further remove conflict points. So, typically, as the traffic volumes increase, it's usually recommended to put more medians in than take them out. So, I don't see Tech Dot supporting taking out the medians. They would love to widen it if we had it sufficient with.
So, we think we might be able to widen and still maintain a median.
Okay.
And access management, which is what you're talking about, is going to be critical to the functionality of these larger corridors moving forward. What that also means too, is some of your business owners make it a little angry at first, because not every driveway, every 500 feet works well in an access management standpoint. And so, we are looking at that at a high level and we will try, we won't go as far to identify which, where they should be, but make the recommendations for when access management should be in place. The where is a much bigger question and a lot more input is generally involved in that.
Thanks, Meg.
All right. Thank y'all and we look forward to updating y'all in the near future.
Forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, work session, item 5B, Citizens Advisory Team Recommendations.
Mayor and Council, you've, last Monday night, you had the opportunity to receive a presentation from the Citizens Advisory Team that highlighted a proposal to go out to the voters this November for five propositions. Jeff Key switched to my computer by chance. I didn't create any new slides for this evening's meeting, just simply using the ones that were presented last, last week. So, the proposal was for a proposition for a civic center or community center and shelter for roughly 7.8 million. Drainage, as well as a food line structure for about 49 million. Some various park improvements to include a replacement of this pool, at least the first phase of that replacement for about six and a half million. The second phase of the public safety building, a new fire station to replace Fire Station Two, and a new training facility for roughly nine million. And then various transportation improvements, somewhat in line with what you received earlier tonight from Megan, as well as some seed money towards Friendswood Parkway, connecting ultimately League City Parkway to Pearland Parkway for about $3 million of that $7.6 million figure. There's been a lot of talk tonight about where the dollars came from for drainage. If Council would like, I can go back to the presentation that was presented to y'all back in April. Ultimately, staff is in support of what Council chooses to do, whether that's move forward with the bond proposition as presented by CAT, some combination thereof, or whatever y'all feel best. So, would y'all like to go individually through the projects or how do you all want to tackle
Well, Mo, I mentioned this to Steve a little bit earlier. John Scott and Steve had some really good contributions to our Well, Mo, I mentioned this to Steve a little bit earlier. John Scott and Steve had some really good contributions to our discussion this Saturday. I'm just getting so many different numbers from so many different places. I really would like for staff to come together and reconcile what we've been getting from the RICE study and what we've been getting from the CAT study. And for my own benefit, I know we were throwing numbers around Saturday, and it was getting to where we weren't really as detailed oriented as I think both studies were. And for me, I would just like to see a reconciliation between the 47 or 49 million dollars and the 32 or 33 million dollars. And that's just for my benefit, so that when I go out and speak to the residents of Friendswood, I have a better idea of where those numbers are coming from. And I know Ron Cox and several people from the C A T have their numbers, and I know we've got some really good numbers from the RICE study. I just want to see a reconciliation of why they're so different. I know we took things off. I don't know when we threw in the park, making it look like a park, and how much that cost. That was kind of new. So I just really, I would like to see those two plans reconciled so that I can get a better idea of what really numbers that we're looking at. And I really appreciated the Honorable Mayor's opinions on it, and I just need that for my own personal opinions, okay?
Well, the RICE study itself highlighted the potential projects that would be of benefit to Friendswood. It didn't do any project estimating or any scoping whatsoever. The RICE study identified, our biggest bang for our buck, proverbial buck, there was no dollar amounts in there, was to shelf or terrace the creek, Clear Creek, as it travels through Friendswood in its current serpentine manner. So we're not straightening the creek, we're not doing anything to the creek aside from extending out the banks above the ordinary high-water mark, a distance of about 200 feet on either side, as well as some channelization, not concrete, but channelization in terms of grass-lined channels below the ordinary high-water mark. Realistically, we're not going to be able to achieve channelization without getting Army Corps of Engineering approval and the hurdle to clear is far beyond our capability and would likely kill the project. So this Drainage Subcommittee went forward and highlighted the various projects that we felt were of merit to improve drainage during large rain events in the city of Friendswood. The total cost estimates that you have on the third or the fourth column from the left represents cost estimates either from internal engineering and coordination with TextDOT, cost estimates from the Harris County Flood Control District for per cubic yard, cost for excavating dirt, and contingency factor of 30%. I will add to the terracing, we took the creek as it currently meanders through Friendswood. So there are sections of the creek that do a complete U-turn, and sections where that terrace would overlap. But we didn't take out any of that overlap section, we just assumed to be cautious. We're going to just take the entire length of the creek, go 200 feet on either side, take a cross-sectional trapezoid out of the creek, assuming that it's almost a square or rectangle, which in reality it's not, and estimate what the cost would be to achieve that shelving project. Those cost estimates totaled in the figures from row four to row seven at $28 million from Dixie Farm to 2351, 22 million from 2351 to Whispering Pines, 10 millions from Whispering Pines to 528, and from 528 to West Bay Area Boulevard, $30 million. Now, our estimations from the other projects and other grants that have been received for similar type work was an 80/20 cost share, where 20% was the local match. The reality is, this is going to vary from grant to grant. There's not one grant that applies specifically across the board. For instance, we have two buyout applications currently that we received word that we got approval, one at 75/25 and another at 100%. It's not the breakdown that the city of Friendswood chooses, it's based upon the severity of the loss according to FEMA's regulations, not the city of Friendswood's desire. My recommendation to City Council is that we don't pursue any of these projects as a two-entity partnership. It is not my intent to go before the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and say, you know what? Friendswood and the Corps of Engineers are now partners, and that's it. As I've mentioned before, Clear Creek is not the responsibility of the city of Friendswood, and I suggest that we go at it with multiple partners, whether that's the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, Harris County Flood Control District, and the state, and the feds. So if our estimate is 25%, if it's 10%, whatever it may be, the money's going to have to come from other partnerships as well, because we're basically allowing those other taxing agencies to get a free ride on our nickel. Now, that being said, if the voters want to approve a larger dollar amount, I am all for it. I think that this is a critical project for the city of Friendswood, and I think it will benefit us greatly. So by all means, whatever we think we will pass, we should pursue, because we don't want to look back and feel that we don't have sufficient funds or run into an issue that we identify another project and we don't have enough money to tackle it.
Okay, Mo, just for some clarifications, C A T came back and said de-snagging's not helping, bridge road raising's not helping. So if we take out the 3 million for de-snag, 200 feet, the 20 million for the bridges, and the other 20 million for the other bridge, so we got 43 million. So now, based on your estimated cost that the Rice University team did over a nine-month period, we're looking at 130 million, right?
Saving except the Rice didn't give us that dollar amount, but yes, 130 million.
Well, the Subcommittee did.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to reconcile the CAT team and the Subcommittee team. Okay, so we're at 130 million based on what you guys in the Subcommittee team came up with. All right, good. I'm here there.
The switching screens, this is the CAT's recommendation of all the projects. If you look at the project amounts in this middle white section, starting with row two going down to about row nine, that's the, the first four after two, two through six is the terracing section, and those are the various dollar amounts that they're recommending based upon their adjustments to the 25%, going from 20% to 25% cost sharing. They've also added inflation. It is correct that we do not anticipate getting these projects completed in the next five years. This is an undertaking that's monumental in scope, especially for Friendswood, so it's going to take a number of years to identify those partners. The engineering and environmental alone for these projects are going to take two years, and that's doing it expeditiously. So this is something that's going to take multi-years, and it's not going to be spent in five years.
But that was part of your 30% factor when the Subcommittee reported, correct?
That was, that along with other stuff were just cushion added to anticipate the unknowns. Anytime you scope a project, the real contingency figure is usually about 20% if you have some level of decent scoping.
I'm sorry, Mo, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that's where I'm getting a little confused on this 30% float that the Harris County people. On our terracing, we're looking at $8 a square foot excavating, plus $2 for fill-in, back roll, make sure that we got everything lined up, so we're looking at $10 a square foot, okay, for terracing. And then we add inflation. And then the Harris County, in their letters, are saying they throw in another 30% for float. That's something that we did not do in the Subcommittee, did we? Or is that, or we did?
We did include the 30% contingency in the Subcommittee, yes.
So on those four terracing projects, the number, the total cost, are the same for each of the scenarios, correct? From the C A T and from the Drainage Subcommittee? The 28, the 30, the 22, the 10. The differences are, if I'm understanding this right, they're not saying that those numbers were not right. The differences are, they believe that 25% should be factored in as the cost that we may need to come up with, and inflation.
Those two are correct. They also increased the engineering number, saying that we should engineer it as a park from the get-go. So they increased the engineering number, and they increased the buyout number. So, so, started with the 32, they dropped the money off for the bridges, they came back and increased the engineering number, they increased the buyout number, and then they changed the percentage that the city Friendswood would have to 25%, and then they added inflation. So those four things are what, take it from the 32 to the 40, 49 something?
Okay, so, let's talk about the buyouts for just a second. You guys came up with a number for buyouts, they came up with a number for buyouts. Why the disparity between, I'm sorry what the numbers are, 30 million and 48 million? Eighteen, that's $18 million worth of buyouts, is that?
So we have the full 48 or 47 million, 9 million of that is inflation compounded annually at 3%.
We're just talking about the line item for buyouts. Right there on yours is 30 million, and the Subcommittee, their total was 48, where the 25% of 48 was 12. So I'm just comparing the total number for buyouts, not our percent, I'm just going total number to total number, apples to apples here.
So they looked at every, the Citizens Advisory Team looked at every property along the creek and estimated a purchase price of either 250,000 or 300,000 or thereabouts on a per-property basis to total that 48 million that's there before you. The reality is, and we mentioned this when we had completed the Drainage Study, the Drainage Subcommittee work, the intent, it would be beautiful if we can keep the, maintain the 200 feet on either side of the creek throughout the reaches of Friendswood, of Clear Creek. But the intent is to maximize properties where we have the opportunity. So for instance, if we have the opportunity to locate the creek furthest away from Poly Ranch on the Harris County side and Wickham property where it's vacant, we would minimize the number of structures, if any, that need to be taken down. So it would reduce the cost of the property acquisition. I'm not married to 200 feet. If we need to go out 300 feet, depending on whatever the case may be, or if the RICE study was a great start, it's not the completed engineering for it, we're going to have to go out and do further engineering. If we go out a greater distance, it may not, the buyout number may be a lot higher than that. It depends until you actually start doing the design work, you're not going to know specifically what all is going to need to be acquired.
Yeah, we, when we were on the sub-team, we looked to see if we could skew directions on either side where we already had land, or one of the drainage districts had it, and tried to avoid houses. The other thing you can, you need to consider about the buyout number is, if we own the property, whether we own it now, we own it as a buyout, that goes toward our match. Okay, so you're already kind of double-dipping there, if you think about it. If you say, I'm going to bump it up to 25%, well, if I'm buying properties out, or if I already own them, or the drainage districts own them, and then we go in for a project, that's part of our match, even if we already own it. So let's take the Wickham property. If we can get, we've got a deal with a church where we can get 20 or 30 acres, they have a, Wickham property has a mile of the creek, and they're willing to basically give it to us for the rights to move the dirt onto the rest of the soil. That counts, the value of that counts toward your buy, I mean toward your percentage.
Do we know about other properties that we already own that could be qualifying for that 25% match? I know we've got a pretty good idea. We already know how many properties.
There's actually an extremely detailed map.
Right.
Who did it, Danenbaum or something?
Danenbaum did the map in 2014.
It shows, there's four or five different ways you can own the land, whether it was a buyout in one of the other storms, or whether it's a fee, or whether it's a park, or whether it's one of the drainage districts owns it. So it goes mile by mile down the creek, and it shows every piece of property we already own. And conveniently, when we pull those maps, one inch on the map equals 200 feet. So it's really easy to go to the center line of the creek and say, okay, if we have, we know, have no pressures, won't do retro, and you either go down there. And oh, by the way, over here, we got houses right to the creek. But do we have more land on the other side, so we could go 300 or 400 feet on the other side? In a lot of cases, we did, in some cases, we didn't. Don't kid yourself, you can't do this project without buyouts, you really can't. We're going to have to acquire property, there's no doubt about it. It's just a question of whether you're going to, how you're going to design it. And in a lot of cases, you can maybe take parts of backyards, but you don't have to take the buildings, you know, that kind of stuff. So we'd have to work something out and do that. But that was, that's what went into the discussion on where we came up with our original number. The current numbers, I understand it, they just had said, every house that touches the creek, they have to buy out, or at least buy the property out. And houses on the Harris County side are 250, 300,000, and on the Galveston side, 500,000, and they just, you know, itemized everyone and said that's how much it would be.
And the Subcommittee looked into the property that we already owned, and that, and were able to determine a better idea, not just take a linear foot of the entire Clear Creek watershed steering, I mean watershed, and say, well, that's how many linear feet is, this is how many properties.
Yeah, we tried to, it was, you know, the RICE study came in a month or two before we're done, so we were trying to get back to this team in time for, to kick the CAT team off and do all that. So, but yes, we did a first pass, we had a couple, help me out, Mo, two or three meetings where we looked at these maps. And we, in fact, in fact, I think we included one in the presentation. And as Mo alluded to earlier, there's sections where, well, like I said, you got almost a 360 ox bow in there, and you'd just say, well, maybe I just take that and terrace the whole thing and make it a new pathway, or something like that. But it's complex, and there's zero chance we get away with having not to buy out something.
Mo, we're fixing to discuss a little later on Atlas 14 maps, and I know we adopted the new maps for the city of Friendswood on the Galveston County side and the 2017 maps. But the Atlas 14s are coming out. Will that affect the price of the property within 200 feet of the creek when that changes based on the Atlas 14 maps? Because that's going to change a lot of people's ideas about what they can actually do in a floodway.
Well, it can go either way. Realistically, if the feds adopt Atlas 14 rainfall data and utilize it as a component for determining the floodplain, then more properties will be in the floodplain, and their insurance premiums will go up in turn and make those properties less valuable to some extent. Whether or not we actually achieve that is anybody's guess. For instance, as we're going through this buyout process, a number of properties have been on the tax roll far below what we're being told they need to be bought out at. So it can go either.
And those maps make it more difficult. If we adopt, for insurance purposes, if we were to adopt that, of course, we'd have to see what Bezoria County and others do, but if we adopt that, then that would even make it probably less expensive to buy them out, in my idea.
And theoretically, yes.
Well, I was going to ask earlier if any of the appraisal district information was used on the actual property minus what we already own or the drainage district already owns. Probably no one got to that level of detail yet, probably.
They, not for the Drainage Subcommittee nor the Citizens Advisory Team, no.
I was just going to add, I believe I understand from the drainage district that between 2351 and 528, they have right-of-way, because they're already working on this terracing, on all but six properties. Now, I don't know how large those six properties are, I don't know how much area we're talking about, but it sounds like they're making some great headway.
They are making quite a bit of headway. For instance, if you, well, if you go out to 2351 and Clear Creek today, you'll see quite a bit of activity where Old Imperial Estates, the 1776 park was, in which they're doing a massive shelving along the Galveston County side of Clear Creek, as well as the Mary's Creek confluence there at that location, where it's going to go back in some parts, greater than 600 feet back from Clear Creek. So they're making great headway in that, and they're continually trying to get properties along the creek.
You know, that was another thing I wanted to talk about too, is that before we make this decision, shouldn't we sit down with the Drainage District and find out exactly? Because I met with a couple of them last week too, and they've got a lot of plans and projects that I think might be beneficial for us to know as a council.
We can definitely do that.
Do it and report it, or somehow, you know.
Well, help me out, but didn't we have representatives on the Subcommittee from the Drainage District? So I mean, I think they've been involved every step of the way.
We have, and as I mentioned earlier, it is not my intent to be the city of Friendswood and the feds, or the city in Friendswood and the state. My intent is to be the city of Friendswood, along with our local partners and those other agencies for funding. So anything we do, we have to have the drainage districts on board, otherwise the projects won't get funded. If the Fed says, well, Friendswood's plan is A, and the drainage district's is B, we're not going to fund anything in Friendswood. So there has to be some concert of opinions and plans moving forward.
And it's your Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee that represents all the entities up and down Clear Creek.
Correct.
Which is another interesting, and Robert sits on both of those, so I'm probably telling Robert everything he already knows.
Well, I will mention they're having a technical workshop with all the players on the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee on the 8th at 2:30. And the G L O, their response to all of us getting together regionally has been fantastic. That's exactly what they want to see. They want to see Bezoria County, they want to see League City, they want to see Friendswood, and they want to see us get together in this. and they wanna see us get together in this technical workshop and present something total along the Clear Creek watershed for the entire deal. GLO's a partner.
They're here for us.
FEMA's a partner.
Good thing you're saying all this, Robert.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. But yes, we're having a technical workshop meeting on the eighth. And that's all moving forward too.
But this is authorization to spend the money and the bond. So we're trying to figure out how much would be enough authorization. The implementation may look different than what we're talking about today because of all the players that will be involved.
I just kinda wanna walk through something, just so we're clear on something. The city of Friendswood legally has no responsibility for Clear Creek. We are all paying taxes to other entities to handle Clear Creek. What the drainage subcommittee came back and said is, "Boy, that model isn't working." So we really had two main focuses. One was, we need to have our own money and we need to get somebody who's gonna fight for our interests. And, you know, we've brought that forward. When you think about the money, whether it's thirty-two million or whatever it ends up being, it's fresh money to this problem, okay? So we can't just sniff at the thirty-two million. It's a lot of money, okay, a lot of money. And it represents fresh money that was never there. And to be honest, it represents us double taxing ourselves because we've paid all these other entities to do it and they haven't done it. And now we're gonna say, "Okay, we're gonna belly up to the bar and do that." You can argue the number, I got that. But I just wanna be clear, the thirty-two million was based on a lot of research and a lot of looking at, a lot of analysis. And it was based also on the fact that we're gonna get somebody that's gonna fight for us. It was also based on the understanding, as Mo said earlier, that it's multiple. I think Ken Clark, who was on our team, brought in an analysis of all the agencies that have Harvey dollars that they could spend in it, it was like some sixteen of them in the area, you know. So you go and you work with as many people as you can. So you get the, you know, Galveston County, Harris County Drainage Districts, you get the counties, you get the feds, the state, you know, GLO, you work on these projects. And we have our piece of money to go in there and we have our money, our guy or gal to go do the work. We were not chartered, our team was not chartered to do a park, okay? So the part that the CAT team put in about designing for a park, that honestly was not our charter to do it, was to fix the drainage. There's also been, you know, we received notes and stuff about if we go higher than the thirty-two million, it's essentially a line of credit. But let's keep in mind, it's a hundred-and-eighty million dollars or so to do this problem. Whether it's thirty-two or forty-two or forty-nine, that's not enough money to fix it. You got to, you got to go out and get those other people to do it. So by going to thirty-two up to forty-nine, you're essentially saying, "I want our citizens to pay even more, just in case we fall short with these other guys," in advance. You know, put it in a future city council's pocket in advance. The other option is to say, "Well, we fight like devils, we work with everybody, we try to get these projects done. If we fall short, you go back to," as Robert said the other day, "the authority to expend is our citizens. Ask them again." I'm not arguing one or the other, I'm just saying this is kinda the balance of the argument that we have here, so.
I just don't like the line of credit semantics. It's, that's not what we're asking for here. We're asking for the authority, for expenditure. And if we get that wrong, then we will have to go back to the citizens and ask for additional authority for expenditure. And it just kinda behooves us to wonder, are all our simulations in? Have we got all our visuals together so that we feel comfortable with the numbers that we're getting? And that's kinda my question for the reconciliation between the two. I'm feeling better about it. I kinda see, well, when you throw a twenty-five percent match and then a thirty percent float versus three various different numbers are coming at you, we just kinda maybe see a little better visual on that, maybe get an idea on that maybe. And I don't know if we need to go out and have more studies for that. But I feel comfortable with where we're going, we're getting to the numbers. But I just wanna make sure I feel comfortable when I go to the citizens of Friendswood and ask for the authority for that expenditure. I'm not asking for a line of credit from the citizens.
So just to be clear, 'cause I, I mean, I, look, I think going out for a bond election and allowing the citizens to approve the tax that they wanna pay for the projects that they wanna pay, if that's how they feel, then good. That's the way, that's the way it should be done. Just a real quick point of clarification. So if you remove the projects that we talked about, that the initial subcommittee came to council then presented, you get down to a hundred-and-thirty million. If you upped it from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, the cost would be about thirty-two and a half million. I'm concerned that we removed those and then nearly doubled it. So I'm concerned about that. So there, we're the ones that have the responsibility for managing the funds that come to the city, right? To making sure, because we'll be the guys getting chased down the streets with pitchforks when the taxes get too high, right? So those that don't sit up here have the luxury of being able to say, "Well, I didn't have anything to do with that." Well, we, we don't have that luxury. So again, my point is, is that I think that as a council, we have to be certain that we understand the number. We have to be confident that it gets us what we want. But we have to be responsible with that. Because it's true. If, 'cause I said Saturday at the retreat, you could put ninety million dollars on drainage and my guess is it would pass. That's my guess. I don't, I don't think to the voting public, really, right now, that you could put a number out there that would be too high for them to turn down. They may turn down every other bond issue. But I think that the drainage issue is in the forefront of everyone's mind. It's still fresh, I think. So, so again, we have a responsibility to work that number to what we think is a good, workable number. Because seven years from now, when the taxes are hitting the people and their tax rates are being increased and they're ready to, you know, we haven't had a hurricane, we haven't had a storm, nobody's flooded, there's been a huge turnover in the community, they wanna know why their taxes are so high, you know. So we need to, we need to work that number down. So, or understand that number. So the original number that was brought to council had the contingency in it, the same contingency. We removed the projects in there, which got it down to a hundred-and-forty million, right? Which at twenty percent would have been roughly about twenty-seven million dollars. At twenty-five percent, it's at thirty-two and a half million dollars. How legitimate is it that inflation, or two things, that the original subcommittee missed the buyout number by eighteen million dollars relative to the CAT and the inflation portion of it? And I understand, you know, the inflation's a real deal. We've passed bonds in the past and haven't been able to complete all of the work that was intended because the cost of the projects went up too high. I just think that we, we're the ones that are gonna bear the responsibility of this when it passes. And I don't know, I don't know that, and I made this case at the last meeting, I don't know that going out for money that we hope that we have in case we have to spend it is being responsible. And to Steve's point, this is a double tax. You're paying your drainage districts to take care of your flooding issues through your taxes. They're taxing you to do that. So this is, this is the best and the worst examples of government. This is government saying, "Well, they're not getting enough money, so we're gonna come after you, get more money out of your pockets, 'cause we know better." Okay. I mean, I can see that in this instance. But at the end of the day, I think that it's our responsibility to make sure that we're as close to a real number as we can be. And I appreciate all the work that's done. I just don't see how you get to even jumping it up from twenty to twenty-five percent, which gets you to thirty-two and a half million dollars, all the way to forty-seven and a half million dollars. And so I struggle with that. But the reality is, is if you put forty-seven and a half million dollars on the ballot, I think it'll pass. I'll vote for it. I'm not gonna be somebody that votes down anything that has to do with drainage. Too many people impacted that I know and spent too many days mucking out houses to be the guy that voted down the, you know, the drainage improvement projects. But at the same time, we're in a hard spot, 'cause we have to be responsible with that. And so, you know, I can't emphasize enough, it's a double tax. I can't emphasize enough that we're not responsible for the creek. You know, I just, we have to be very careful with what we put on the ballot. That's all I'm saying. And I would hope that those in the CAT would also be appreciative and respectful enough of that to not champion against a bond election that isn't exactly what you said it should be. We gotta work together as a group to make sure that we're responsible with the dollars and that it accomplishes the goals that we set. That's my two cents.
Well, I, I am directly aligned with John and a few others here. I, one thing I like about the CAT is that they did bump up our share to twenty-five percent to be a little bit careful, conservative on what we will be, the monies we will be able to get from other agencies. So like we've said, that takes us up to thirty-two and a half million. I think I have a heart, I struggle with the fact that we add inflation on to a number that already has a thirty percent contingency factor in it. The CAT didn't start with brand-new numbers and then inflate those. They started with the thirty percent inflated numbers and added. And so, like John says, you know, implies every time we tax our citizens, we tell them exactly what we're spending their money on. You know, on your property taxes, we have a budget that says, "This is what we're gonna spend this money on and this is how we set your tax rate." We just didn't say, "Oh, we're just gonna tax you this much money and we'll figure out what we're gonna spend it on." You know, we know exactly what we're gonna spend it on. So to go out and say, "Hey, we know what we're gonna spend this bond money on, plus or minus, you know, inflation and some padding that we're throwing in there," it does worry me. It bothers me that we're the ones that have to go out to sell this to the citizens. Because, Mo, are you gonna be able to sell this to the citizens? City staff?
No, well, neither can council. We can only provide informational data associated with this.
Oh, so I'm not even selling this, okay.
No.
All right. Well, I will say like John, I will vote for this. But I think there is a limit to the number that we can put on the bond election because we will lose other propositions, I think. If we spread this out across five propositions and one of them is forty-nine million dollars, I think people would say, "Well, yeah, flooding's important." Flooding only impacted twenty percent of our population. But I think there's, like you said, there's more than fifty percent that are concerned about it. So I think, I think it would carry. But I think there's a limit to what we could put on there and successfully get the other things that we all agree that we need the CAT team recommend. So I am struggling with this as well. That's why I asked the buyout question, you know. I am willing to dicker on somewhere between, what do we say, thirty and forty-eight million, our twenty-five percent, seven and a half to twelve million factor for buyouts. If you feel like we oughta bump that number up.
As I said at the outset, I'll take as much money as
I know you will.
the council and the citizens are willing to support.
And every government employee everywhere.
We just can't ask the citizens to write a blank check.
I understand.
Some huge number and we'll spend it wisely.
But to give you some perspective, the hundred-and-eighty million, hundred-and-ninety million dollars, Friendswood can't do it alone. The drainage district can't do it alone. Harris County Flood Control District, despite their bond passing last August, cannot do this alone. They're gonna have to partner with the state or federal agency. So when we're asking twenty percent or twenty-five percent, the reality is Friendswood, it won't be my recommendation, Friendswood will not put down the twenty-five percent. Friendswood will be putting down some portion of the twenty-five percent alongside of Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District in order to get the one-hundred-and-ninety million. So if you have, so if you already have thirty percent built in, we're already estimating we're on the hook for twenty-five percent, there's already a cushion built in that another agency's gonna eat up. So if there's inflation, we're not gonna be out money 'cause those other agencies are gonna have to share that twenty-five percent with us. Now, that being said, they may never go to the table with us. And a future council said, "You know what, it's gonna have to be Friendswood and the Corps of Engineers." And if that's the direction the future council gives me, if I'm still employed, then that's what I will do.
Can I say that no government employee ever just said what you said? Which is that we have more than enough. So.
That could be proven wrong.
So I made, I made, I made light of the fact that you said, "We'll take it," but that's the truth. But the other, the other reality of this is, and we talked about this Saturday and I didn't bring it up, there's other items in different bond elections that are important to pass for mobility and for shelters in our community that are not part of drainage. And so one of the things that we discussed is, you can make the drainage number a hundred million dollars. But I can tell you from personal experience, when there were folks being sheltered at the high school who were dying, me and a partner of mine tried to figure out a way to get over to the Clear Lake Medical Center because we had someone whose wife was a CFO, COO, or whatever, who said, "Yeah, they'll take them." Well, the only way to get out of Friendswood was League City Parkway. So if we've got, we've got contingency money for Friendswood, whatever you wanna call it, Parkway, in another bond, in the street bond. I would hate to see that bond get voted down because the drainage bond is all that they wanna spend tax money on. I think that all of them are viable and that they all have their merits. I argued Saturday, to some extent, that the Friendswood Parkway portion of it should be put into the drainage portion of it. I know that the school district was kind enough to, at the drop of a hat, open their schools and make it a shelter. But I don't think that we can always expect that to happen. So the new civic center would be a shelter. Senior Activity Community Civic Center.
Can I ask you a sort of a process question to Mo here? In terms of what we have to, am I on here? What do we have to get done and by when?
So by August fifteenth or nineteenth, we have to call or adopt an ordinance that calls for election in November. And that ordinance would be very specific in terms of the bond language that the voters are gonna look at. Between now and that timeframe, we have one more council meeting scheduled. Obviously, we can call a special meeting if we need to. But we need to determine the number of propositions that we have and how we want them worded. So I don't need a final decision necessarily tonight, but I do need to start getting some direction from you all.
Well, given that and not necessarily to deflate the drainage thing, but we should talk tonight about how we wanna package these together. And I just wanna comment, and I'm thinking of a statement that John made a while back about, you know, "Bonds are very fair because you're giving a person opportunity to decide up-down." I really don't like the idea of packaging a lot of stuff in with the drainage bond, okay? Like, because you say, "Oh, I wanna put the civic center in with it and have that money because we, because a very small percentage of the ti-" I'm sorry, what? Community center, because some small, but important percentage of the time, it's going to serve as a shelter. I want that to pass on its own, okay? And the same thing with some of these other ones where we would, we would say, "Let's not overly package them into a smaller number and reduce the transparency and reduce people's ability to say, 'I like this, I don't like this,' and now I'm really in a bad shape because I, they're all together and I don't have a ability to do that." So I would encourage us to be, you know, to make delineations of these bonds that kinda really do go together.
If I may, I typically, you're right, I do like seeing things broken out because of the transparency and people can see exactly what they're voting for and they can vote it up or down. But I think with the sheer number of pieces in this bond, I think it's gonna be very, very confusing and very, very difficult. And one of the things, and Councilmember Hanks brought this up, some of these projects, it's seed money. It's not something that Friendswood's actually gonna be able to move out on, on their own, as Mo's been talking. Some of the projects are projects that we do own and we could move out on them. We have a lot more control over those. So my suggestion would be that we actually try to package these, if that's the right word, such that the things that have to do with drainage- word, such that the things that have to do with drainage, let's put those together. Things that we're waiting on seed money for, let's put those together so that you may wind up with two propositions clearly defining what's in each one of those propositions. And then go with this, the ones that we're looking for seed money, just put a blanket 25% across the board and just say, hey, this is going to, plus or minus, this should represent about 25% of the seed money that we have to have once the engineering is done, once the environmental is done, once traffic studies are done, you know, whatever it is. So that would be my recommendation because otherwise, this is a very, very busy proposition. The most we've ever done in the past was four. So that would just be my recommendation. So I like where you're headed, John, because I agree with you, there were islands all over Friendswood. We could not get from one end of town to the other. And not being able to get medical care was high on the list. So I truly do believe we need to have multiple options around our community and be able to get to them. So I would be a big proponent for the community center, Friendswood Parkway, and Public Works. We have to get Public Works out of the creek. That's just not appropriate. Right, Renee? So those are my
Do you have the, just the packages? I believe that there was some things in the, was it transportation that we could look at, that 7.6 million? And in that, we had Westwood Student Drop Off and we also had Klein Elementary Briar Meadow Improvements for 1.481 million. We really don't know what's going to happen with Klein Elementary and we really don't know what F I S D is going to do with Westwood Student Drop Off and that sort of thing. So with regards to this, I could make a motion now, right now, if it could be seconded, that we drop those two items from this package and leave, well, and leave that open for discussion.
No motion, but if you just give me some general directions, that's fine.
It's just a workshop, so.
I like where Robert is heading with this, but rather than dropping those dollar amounts off, we know that Friendswood Parkway is going to be about 15 million. If the monies that were set aside for Klein and/or Westwood, I'd rather see those go either towards our sidewalk effort, which I know is also important for safety, or the Friendswood Parkway, because I think, we just heard it in the traffic study, Friendswood Parkway is going to be extremely important for our future.
I agree with you, Sally.
Like within the next five years.
I really do, but we have some other possibilities for tips possibly with Friendswood Parkway. We have, do we have some matching funds? What would be our share of the Friendswood Parkway if we were to go all out with all the various different entities? Is 3 million enough? Or if it's not, then Sally's absolutely right.
3 million is the bare minimum. Unlike drainage, there are not other agencies that are willing to partner with us on that. So 3 million represents the 20% for a tip application, a transportation improvement.
So it would be, it would be my recommendation that you take the, so if you don't know, the school district's proposal on their bond in the spring is to build, if they do it, is to build a new elementary school in West Ranch, where West Ranch donated property and get rid of Klein as a school. So it would be, I mean, I could say the Westwood drop off in the Klein, add a million and a half to the Friendswood Parkway portion of it, and then leave that bond, that still makes that bond total a little bit less.
Let me take that action, Mo. Got some direct.
Rough nodding of heads, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we're making some headway. Uh, sorry. Well, I think this is good. Packaging, let's have that discussion a little bit further. Marad, how do we break up these propositions? Should we take the flooding drainage-related projects that, where we are just putting up a 25, 20 or 25% share into the drainage program and separate out those, these projects like a community center that we are all in on, you know, we know we're putting the entire bill for that, that's a separate proposition? What do you think?
So real quickly, because I think I started this, leading us down this rabbit hole, the point I was making Saturday is if you use the 32 and a half million dollars, you could put the road and the civic
Community.
Whatever center in it, and you're still under 49 million dollars. And so the point that I was making is that those are both big improvements as it relates to mobility during storms and housing of people during storms. So I think all of those is kind of a storm-related deal. And so I think that the drainage bond is going to pass by a lot. So if we think that, and it was only a, it was only a recommendation, it wasn't anything like I was suggesting that we do it, but I thought that if those were important enough to help our community during a storm and put them in with the drainage, your number's still less than 49 million dollars and they pass.
So how do you do that in a bond language and keep those three amounts of money separate? So they don't get intermingled?
Well, I will preface, anything we do will have to be approved by our bond council, the attorneys that will review any ballot language that's drafted, as well as the Secretary of State's office. So the short answer is you have a very lengthy bond proposition language that itemizes the projects and the dollar amounts associated with each, but we still have to share it with the bond council for
Because I don't want to put the center in with the drainage and then find out later that the center cost 8.7 million and they took a million out of the drainage funds because it was all one bond. I don't want to see that. I don't want anybody to be able to do that.
And I understand, and so the ballot language either can be very vague or could be more specific. And if the dollar amounts are given in the ballot language itself, we're limited to those dollar amounts.
I still like the idea that I was suggesting Saturday that the things that we are going to be able to do should be on a separate ballot so that everybody knows these are the things we want to accomplish. The city of Friendswood's taking this on. And the other, the other language would be the drainage that we need partners on and we need the authority to expend money in the future when we have those partners. I think that makes it clear to people. And I can see either way, John. I can see putting those things in with drainage because it all kind of commingles, but I think it gets messy in the future and maybe even messy on the language. And certainly, if it's messy in the language, it's not going to be understood very easily by people. And you never know for sure what that civic center's going to cost.
Correct.
You know, I mean, they give you these cost estimates, but you never know, so, or anything, really.
Until the project's fully designed and goes out for bid, when you get those bid dollars, that's when you know what the actual cost will be. If you were to approach it from that standpoint, it would be drainage, the Public Works Facility and Friendswood Parkway as one item, because those are projects that require other partners and other contingents. For instance, the Public Works Building, if we don't pursue Food Lion in totality, you have a structure that's within the terracing that's going to have to come out. And how do we do that if we don't fund that project? But the other projects, the community center, the improvements along various sections of Tech Dot Roadways, the parks are all city projects that we don't require partnerships from. So those three can be on their own if you were to approach it from that standpoint.
Well, on Parkway, that 3 million, we're going to do the engineering, are we going to do the right-of-way? How much is the state? I mean, it's a state?
So it's coming from Federal Highway Administration dollars that's funneled through the state of Texas, so Tech Dot would have some oversight in it, but it's a 75, 25% grant through the Transportation Improvement Program through HGAC. And that 3 million represents our 20% share. Now, that could be all engineering to get it done. We still have to design it in accordance with federal regulations. It's not simply Friendswood standards, but that represents our share.
Well, is that something we can do ahead of time before we get that grant from the
We can, provided we comply with their regulations. So for instance, if I were to build a road in Friendswood, there's a certain set of standards that we have for Friendswood roads. Tech Dot has a different set of standards, and then the Federal Highway Administration has yet a third set of standards. If we know we're going to be seeking federal dollars for this roadway, we'd design it to the Federal Highway Administration standards. But that's with the 3 million.
Can I ask when we're going to come, bring these up for a vote? Can we somehow do the vote so that we vote on the packaging and then we vote on the final putting the bond out? Because I don't want to be in a position of saying, hey, I want to, I'm going to end up voting against putting the drainage bond out because I don't like that street, for example. I'd like to, so I'd like us to have a vote that says, you know, majority rules that this is how we should package them, and then have a vote that says, should we put them out for a bond? Is that fair to do?
And don't take this as I've heard enough tonight because I haven't, but what I can do is come back at a later meeting, either a special meeting later in July or the August 5th meeting, and present to y'all options, packaging options. And depending on what y'all choose there, present an ordinance before the August 15th or 19th deadline, whichever it is, for council consideration.
We don't need a vote on the
Correct.
I like that.
Do we vote on the language too, Mary Kay?
Yes.
The bond council will do it and then we vote on the language. So we vote first what we're going to do, then the packaging, how we're going to package it, and then we actually vote on the language, right?
And it doesn't have to be that multi-step. In 2013, there was a little bit more agreeance and obviously, we're dealing with a different animal today with regard to drainage than we did in 2013, but it wasn't that complicated. It was just one item. It was four propositions, but one. There was more agreeance, if that's a word.
I think, I think we're coming to agreement. It was what I feel up here. Where we fall on the drainage, between 32 and a half and 40 or 49, I think is still a little bit soft, but I think we, I haven't heard anything about any of these projects not making it to the, except for Westwood and Klein, those two items not making it to a bond proposition. And I think we're all sort of leaning towards calling for a bond election. I don't think we'd be having these lengthy discussions if we're going to all say, ah, never mind, thanks for doing all this work, but we're not going to do it. So I think, I think we're getting there. I think it's just a matter of, you know, numbers now and hashing those out, and I'm sure people will lobby us both ways, like they have been. But what else do we need to discuss tonight?
No, I think I have enough direction. We'll have either a special meeting in July with council's concurrence, or we'll have a special meeting in August, but we'll definitely get this taken care of.
Thanks, Marad. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there. What we'd like to do, let me look here. If you'll allow me to suspend the rules, we can knock out a few things. We are not going to get to our public hearing on the properties, the zoning, until 7 o'clock, but we have a little time here. We could do, how about
The Declaration of Independence, is there a chance? I know there are some parents out here that want to see. I apologize.
We are definitely going to see that. Okay. Item 9B, Declaration of Independence.
Is that going to be after 7?
After 6 is what we had planned. 6 o'clock. Jeff, let the parents know that it would be sometime after 6. How many parents are in the audience that had performers?
Okay, well, then we can do whatever council would like.
Do we want to, do we want to hold off a few minutes? It makes no difference. Let's hold off for a few minutes. Okay, let's go to 9A, West Ranch Management. I don't do what Jeff tells me to do. He's giving me a thumbs up now.
So there is a report in the backup material from the West Ranch Management District related to their activities this past year. Nothing major to report beyond the plan to reduce, continue to reduce the tax rate associated with the management district and the completion of various projects that are out there.
Thank you. Okay, item 10, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Appointments and Reappointments to the Following Committees, Boards, Commissions. Community and Economic Development Committee appoint Thomas Hinckley to a three-year term expiring July 2022 to replace Gary Kay, who did not seek reappointment, and reappoint Jennifer Whitley and Pauline Moore to three-year terms expiring July 2022. Motion of second, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Okay, item 11 is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Billy Enochs as a New Board Member to the Gulf Coast Authority.
Second.
Motion of second. I'll just give a little background on this. Gulf Coast Authority is the entity that controls about five wastewater treatment plants in the state of Texas. I think three or four of them are here on the Gulf Coast. One's in Midland or Odessa, so I don't know how they get lumped in with the Gulf Coast. But we, mayors in Galveston County, appoint one of the nine board members. So that means that all the mayors in Galveston County get a vote on a person to replace a retiring board member who was also happened to be from Friendswood. And I nominated Billy Enochs because I talked to Billy. Billy's a great guy. Billy has some knowledge about this topic and he's willing to serve. He's actually gone to a few of their meetings to find out what's going on. So I nominated him to Mayor Yarborough in Galveston, the mayor of the Galveston County seat. The city of Galveston actually calls the election, I think. Long story short, he may be passing it off to Mayor Halcy to call because Mayor Halcy is president of our mayor's association. Way too much information, I think. But anyway, what I'm asking council tonight to do is to ratify my vote for Billy Enochs when we get the call. We've got a motion of second, all in favor of that? Thank you. Sorry. I think I was way too transparent on that. Okay, item 12, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Election of the Mayor Pro Tem.
Make the Second.
Somebody needs to make a motion for, somebody needs, with your motion, name a mayor pro tem.
I will make a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Did it win?
I'll make a motion if I win.
And I second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Boy, voted for herself. Okay.
Stay real.
Congratulations, mayor.
Two of them now.
Left Mayor Pro Tem and right Mayor Pro Tem.
Can I just say something? You know, I like what we've decided over the last couple of years is to just rotate the Mayor Pro Tem because it's so much fun. And we just came up with a formula, the most senior member of the council who hasn't done it yet gets to do it. So Sally will be terrific at it.
Item 13.
Thank you.
Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Dedication of a Public Sidewalk Easement at 2205 West Barkwood Avenue to the Grease Monkey site. Motion of second, Mo, explain to this.
Sure. So Grease Monkey, we are getting property. We're getting the rights to locate or to allow someone to put a public sidewalk easement on it. Grease Monkey is located off of 528 across from Winsong Intermediate, next to JJ's Car Wash. They can't locate the sidewalk within the road right-of-way, so they're putting it on private property, but want it to be a public sidewalk, so they're dedicating an easement for it.
We have a motion of second, all in favor? Okay, item 14 is a resolution, Resolution R 2019-21, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas. Galveston Harris County is authorizing the end of license and support with Hart Inter Civic for election equipment and authorizing the return of equipment to Hart Inter Civic.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion of second. We no longer need this equipment since we are contracting with the county of Galveston for our elections, so we don't have to spend that money, savings for us. So I think it's a good thing. All in favor? Okay, some of these ordinances we can't get to yet because we have to have a public hearing on them. F we can definitely do. I think we can do
D?
D.
How about A?
D, E, and F. We'll get to those in order. Ordinance number T 2019-27, first reading of an ordinance amending section 34-24 to adopt the FIRM firm for Galveston County and Incorporated areas that becomes adopt the FIRM firm for Galveston County and incorporated areas that becomes effective August 15, 2019, which establishes the areas of special flood hazard for Galveston County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Marad, real quick.
Sir, last fall, council adopted the preliminary maps that FEMA had proposed for Galveston County, the 2018 preliminary map. We already have these maps in place for the city of Friendswood on the Galveston County side. FEMA is now ready to adopt them, which means the effective insurance impact will play a place after August 15. That's what we're going to discuss, that we adopt the map and everybody's operating on it.
Okay. We have a motion of second, all in favor? Ordinance number T 2019-28, first reading of an ordinance amending section 70-196 of the code of ordinances pertaining to use of temporary means of marking utilities on paved surfaces within public rights of way.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion of second.
Related to temporary pavement markings associated with projects that are done within our right-of-way, so every time a new line is installed, whether it's AT&amp;T, Comcast, any organization, they're supposed to locate existing utilities within the right-of-way that may impact the project's installation. So as you know, we've recently installed brick pavers up and down 518 and those brick pavers have become unsightly with spray paint by the various one-call agencies identifying line locates. Public Works and Mary Kay did extensive research and found a solution that's a little less temporary and a little less impactful on the sidewalks and washes away far faster than it did than the spray paint. It's a chalk material. As well as establishing some provisions that make it the responsibility of the one-call agencies to come back and clean up anything that doesn't wash away.
Thank you, Mary Kay, for researching that, too. It was important. And Renee?
Can we do something about the ones that are spray painted on virtually forever? Can we do something to try to diminish them?
So they're evaluating various solvents and pressure washing, but we're concerned about compromising the integrity of the pavers. For instance, when we tried pressure washing them, it washes out the sand, the bank sand that's underneath the pavers themselves. We are looking at some chemical-based solutions that would diminish them without ruining the pavement itself.
Renee, how long would it take for it just to wear off?
It's 15 days. The chalk paint is geared out to fade away within 15 days with a wash of a rain.
And what's been used so far that we're looking into different solv, how long will that just wear away?
The stuff out there that's now, different entities, and one we found, I won't name the entity, but it's more of an oil base. Some have been latex. Going, looking at Sister Cities, we looked at a chalk paint. It's required for the entities to do a line locate again every 15 days, so it's geared out for 15 days. And what we're also working together on is having the structure in place with the ordinance to hold the franchise utility companies and also have a bonding effect towards them and then also hold them accountable to correct these measures. As Mo shared, the cleaning of the existing ones, there's been different methods have been approached. And as far as pressure washing, it actually does more damage for the subgrade of the actual pavers. We have reached out to a, and working with Steve and our public work staff, they've been great, and working with Mary Kay and Steve and Mo, is that there's a product that we've met with a vendor. It has to be applied a certain way. It can be a little dangerous. So one of our key things, we're trying to make sure is that after we wash it down, that it doesn't harm any of the plant life and humans as far as any, somebody walking barefoot or a pet coming over there. That's one of the key things we're trying to make sure before we start applying it, to clean the existing ones that are out there.
And Robert, there's some out there that are, look, as brand-new as they were put down, and they were put down over a year ago. Yeah, they just don't wear away.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Kay, but this ordinance also would allow those utility companies, since they're not marking the exact spot, they could mark the street or the curb or put a stake in, so it's not necessarily that they have to just use chalk paint and put it right on the sidewalk. They can mark that area that's acceptable to where that utility lies, correct?
They'll use flags for the different colors for the different entities.
Well, I just want to say thank you because it was heartbreaking when we just got our brick pavers down in front of City Hall and Stevenson Park and they came right in behind and started marking all that. I was just like, oh, my gosh, how could they be doing that? So thank you for that research. I appreciate it.
All in favor? I couldn't remember if we had voted or not. I was thinking that the chief might have some people over there in his facility that we could, you could bring some of your chain gang out with, you know, scrub brushes and maybe you could make a dent. Yeah. Okay, ordinance T 2019-29, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment nine, the original general budget for the city fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor? Okay, 16, communication from the mayor and council members. Brent, what do you think?
I didn't chime in too much on the items before, but I think that the council up here, I mean, I speak for myself and most of us, we want to do what's best for this city as it's an investment in this city. We just have to determine what the costs are in this investment of the bond and how much that's going to cost each citizen. So I can assure you that we're all, you know, working up here to try to find the best solution for everybody and we appreciate all the CAT's input. Because like I said, we couldn't have done any of this without the research that you all did and I thank you greatly for that.
John?
Just like to say thank you for the last year being mayor pro temp. I really enjoyed it. It's not, it's not the task that Steve makes it out to be, but.
I think he was never sick.
That's true. That's true. There's probably a reason. But anyway, I enjoyed it. Only had to give one speech, I think, Memorial Day speech. So anyway, it was a great time and appreciate you having the confidence in me to allow me to sit in that position. And got 4th of July coming up, so don't forget it's Thursday and Molly and the Ring Waltz. So if you're as old as I am, you'll love them.
We're all as old as you are, except for Brent. Let me jump on because I want to thank John for the great job that you did as mayor pro temp. Yes, really. John was my first mayor pro temp as mayor, my only mayor pro temp so far. But John did a fantastic job and I can give examples, if we had a lot of time, of all the situations where he came in and we were talking an issue and, you know, thinking outside the box. He came up with a solution that we all, the rest of us said, aha, great idea, you know? And so it was great working with you as mayor pro temp and I appreciated you very much. So thank you for doing that. I'll turn it back to you.
I've already said enough tonight. I think everybody's tired of hearing me talk.
Agreed.
So I'm just going to say, I'm just going to say, God bless America, God bless this city, and everybody have a happy 4th of July.
And I'm going to also echo, thank you, John, for your leadership this past year. Has been, it's been good for me to get to know you better and to hear your opinions about things. And it definitely has been, I said it, I said it. Happy 4th of July, everyone. I can't wait for the festivities. And I think those Apollo flags up and down 518 look awesome. I'm excited about what's to happen this month.
Ally?
What a good lead-in. Thank you. Happy 4th of July. It is going to kick off the month of 50th anniversary of Apollo 11, our landing on the moon. The banners were actually private donations, so we were out fundraising and there are 20 citizens who helped purchase those banners and we're very grateful to them. Our Rotary Club also, Friendswood Rotary Club, also made a significant donation, so they are underwriting the activities. But we have flyers all over the city, the library, and Jeff Newfer, I want to thank you very much. You've done a great job. And he did coach the mayor in a mayor Mike's Minute. And we truly do have a month of fun, exciting things. A lot of it's happening at the library. On July the 27th, we're going to have an afternoon and evening of fun here in the park that'll kind of cap everything off. So hope you'll look it up. It's Apollo 11, no, 50th, apollo11.com. Sorry, I'm having a hard time with that one. So I also want to thank the CAT team and I also want to thank my fellow council members. I'm very honored. First, I was shocked that I was the most senior member who hadn't served yet. That's pretty shocking. But I do appreciate y'all's confidence and I'll try not to let you down. And John, I might have to call you for some cheat notes, I don't know. Thank you.
We had a gentleman who did his Eagle Scout project at the Perry House, did a really nice job this past weekend. And it got me to thinking that we've had, I've been involved in several Eagle Scout projects where people have done Eagle Scouts or the Girls at the Gold Award for the city. And I was just wondering if we could consider at some point when somebody gets an Eagle Scout or Gold Award to bring them in and thank them, particularly if their project was for the public, the public area. I think it'd be kind of a nice recognition for them in the future. So if we could think about a way to do that, I think that'd be a great idea.
That's great. I think we ought to call Callahan, is it? Call him. Yeah, next month, let's put him on. So we got that one, Stephen. All right, well.
One second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Okay, let's adjourn until 7:00. All right, let's reconvene. Got a special treat for y'all to start off with. Jeff, are you ready for the Declaration of Independence?
When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another.
And to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station.
To which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them.
A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal.
That they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights.
That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.
That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends.
It is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government.
Laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness.
Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes.
And accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable.
Than to write themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed.
But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object, evens are designed to reduce them under absolute despotism.
It is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security.
Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government.
The history of the President King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations.
All having in the direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states.
To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world.
He has refused his assent to laws the most wholesome and necessary for the public good.
He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance.
Unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained.
And once suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them.
He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people.
Unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature.
A right inestable to them and formidable to tyrants only.
He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records.
For the sole purpose of attaking them into compliance with his measures.
He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly.
For opposing with merely firmness his invasions on the rights of the people.
He has refused for a long time after such dissolution because others should be elected.
Whereby the legislative powers incapable of annihilation have returned to the people at large for their exercise.
The state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and convulsions within.
He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states.
For that purpose obstructing his laws for naturalization of foreigners.
Refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither in raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands.
He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers.
He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries.
He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance.
He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures.
He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power.
He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to the acts of pretended legislation.
For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us.
Protecting them by a mob trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states.
For cutting off our trade with all parts of the world.
For imposing taxes on us without our consent.
For depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury.
For transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses.
For abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing their end in arbitrary government.
And enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example.
An fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies.
Taking away our charters, abolishing our valuable laws.
And altering fundamentally the forms of our governments.
For suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever.
He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us.
He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coast.
Burnt our towns and destroyed the lives of our people.
He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny.
Already begun with circumstances of cruelty and perfidy scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation.
He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country.
To become the executioners of their friends and brethren or to fall themselves by their hands.
He has excited domestic insurrections amongst us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of the frontiers, the merciless Indian savages.
Whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions.
In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for address in the most humble terms.
Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury.
A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people.
Nor have we been wanting inattentions to our British brethren.
We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us.
We have provided them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here.
We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity.
And we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations.
Which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence.
They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and consanguinity.
We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation.
And hold them as we hold the rest of mankind.
And hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies and war and peace friends.
We, therefore, the representatives of the United States of America in general Congress, assembled.
Appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions.
Due in the name and by authority of the good people of these colonies, songly published and declare.
That these united colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states.
That they are absolved from all regions to the British Crown.
And that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved.
And that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce.
And to do all other acts and things which, uh, pended states may of right do.
And for the support of this declaration, with the firm alliance on the protection of divine providence.
We mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortune, and our sacred honor.
Good. Very good. Good job, Jeff Newfer. Appreciate you putting that together. No, we're, public hearing. So I'll call the public hearings to order. Item A, zone classification change request for .7471 acres of land out of Reserve G, Forest Bend subdivision, section three, located at 17158 Black Hawk Boulevard, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, from neighborhood commercial to neighborhood commercial slash special use permit to allow next use number eight one three one religious organizations. We're gonna allow citizens or you're gonna give the little discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna give a little introduction and give you P and Z's recommendation. This is the first night with our new process. So Planning and Zoning Commission already had their separate public hearing and their recommendation is required before y'all can hold your public hearing. So, so this is for Calvary Chapel Church and they own the property, they have their main campus faces 528 and then they own this building as well that actually faces Blackhawk. There was a daycare in there previously. Since Hurricane Harvey, the daycare did not reopen and the church is using it just for classes and a possible food pantry now. So we need to extend their SUP over to this property as well. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing and their recommendation was unanimous approval, seven to zero.
Okay, are there any citizens that would like to speak in favor of this zone change? Any citizens like to speak against this zone change? Okay. Moving on. Zone classification change request for 1.7243 acres of land consisting of two tracts of 1.477 acres and 2.2473 acres out of lot four, block 11, Friendswood subdivision, located at 108 Whispering Pines, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, from single-family residential to downtown district.
The planning and zoning recommendation on this was unanimous to approve, seven to zero as well.
Any citizens here to speak in favor of this zone change? Counselor.
Good morning, good evening. My name is Greg Crinian, I'm representing the Harris family. Mr. and Mrs. Harris are here and their son Kevin is here. We're talking about three and a half acres on Whispering Pines, addresses are 108 and 110. This property has been owned in the Harris family since the early 1900s, their deeds dating prior to World War II. I think they go back to 1908. So they've been here a very long time and been participants in our community before probably everybody else in this room. This property is a large part of their family savings. They need to sell the property so they can move on with the next phase of their life. That is the reason for the rezoning request. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the family has received and accepted an offer to purchase the easternmost property, which is generally referred to as 110. And that user is a proposed memory care facility that they are looking to establish. I heard it described a little bit ago as apartments, I don't think that's particularly accurate. I don't think they'll be renting out the rooms. But that is, as I said, 110. And that also, as I said, came in after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So we weren't aware of, we didn't have a deal until after that occurred, so we weren't able to share any of that information. We now have that and so that's one of the items we'd like to bring up tonight. 108 is the other property. This is, both properties, by the way, are already in the downtown district. 108 is not part of that transaction, it is separate, right now it'll be a separate piece of property. It is about an acre and a half. With an acre and a half of land, its uses really are going to be a pad site for some sort of commercial use, an office building, a one-story small office building is what you're going to fit on an acre and a half of land. Doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, we don't need them, but we need some more doctors in our community, okay? The use for the 110 that's being proposed, it is a single story. You're not going to have a multi-story Alzheimer's residence, memory care facility. Right, so it's single story. It will have obviously extremely low impact on any neighbors because there will not be a lot of traffic going in and out of the facility. We won't have multiple stories involved. So I think we were finding probably one of the best uses we can for this property that would be next to any sort of a residential use. Any other heavier use, even an office building, would be a heavier commercial use than a memory care facility. It has been suggested at one of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings that perhaps our rules be changed so that rezoning is not allowed until all of the development plans have been prepared. And that is just not feasible. I've served a long time with the Economic Development Committee, that was something that was changed more than a decade ago and I would hope that we don't go down that road again, there will not be any more development in the city if that occurs. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended a rezoning of 108 and we would, that is our request as well. We're asking that it be rezoned to downtown, 110 be rezoned to downtown district as well. And I've described the use that is expected to be made of that property. Questions or?
Thanks, Mr. Crinian.
Enough, thank you very, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any citizens like to speak against the rezoning of 108? Please come forward. We're specifically talking, I know Mr. Crinian spoke on both properties, we're really on the item to discuss 108 Whispering Pines right now.
Good evening, I am Tracy Din. I'm here representing Timberfield HOA. We are concerned about the rezoning request. I also have Katie White, she's our vice president, thank you. We are here because we are considering, asking the council to reconsider. We really are concerned because of Whispering Pines' traffic. We came up here about two years ago before the hurricane hit, when the road construction was done. We were concerned then about line of sight, safety, pedestrian traffic, also the bridge itself. One of the things that we wanted to know was during the planning and rezoning meeting, we did have a resident attend and we heard from the family that if both lots were not rezoned to downtown district, then they would not consider commercializing it. We would hope that the family still considers that. Our subdivision Verdune, the exit is right across the street from them. It's already hard for us to exit the area. We're concerned that if any businesses come in, that's gonna make it harder for us to leave the area. There's also two bus stops along that route, one for, I think it's Deepwood and the other one is for Arbury. So again, as residents of Timberfield, we ask you to reconsider, assess any traffic flow, line of sight issues before you can approve the downtown district commercialization.
Some other concerns that we have are the risk of flooding. I'm sorry, I'm not good with public speaking, so I'm gonna read. If the property is at 108 and 110 Whispering Pines are rezoned commercial, it would be part of the downtown district, which does not require onsite detention. Without onsite detention requirements, these properties could be developed with maximum impervious cover, therefore directly affecting substantial watershed runoff. The existing storm sewer infrastructure along Whispering Pines would be overloaded. The additional watershed runoff from maximum impervious cover would flow directly into Timberfield subdivision and thus impact our risk of flooding. Without onsite detention requirements, the runoff to our subdivision would be inevitable unless the city requires onsite detention for these properties. Another point is that all but one home in Timberfield Estates flooded during Harvey and so we are all traumatized by that. The risk of pedestrian accidents, many of us use, avoid using the intersection at Whispering Pines 518 crosswalk because it does not allow pedestrians to cross safely. This is especially concerning, a concern when we have events like July 4th and there's lots of pedestrians. It's not just us we're concerned about, we don't want somebody hit right in front of our subdivision or at all. So, last concern is a risk of car accidents. Entering and, there will be additional traffic, no matter what goes there. Entering and exiting our neighborhood is tricky. We have to stop early and then pull out into the bike lane area in order to see the line of sight, so any additional traffic is not, not good in any way. Thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Okay, item C is the zone classification change request for 1.8367 acres of land out of lot four, block 11, Friendswood subdivision, located at 110 Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, from single-family residence to downtown district.
Yes, sir. The recommendation of Planning and Zoning, the motion to approve failed with a two to five vote, so it's a negative recommendation from the commission. And do you want me to go over the reasons? So this was the property that the boundary was extended at the last council meeting to include this property. The primary reasons for the commission opposing the request was not knowing how the property will be developed, creating too many unknowns for nearby homeowners, including the impact to traffic, their use and enjoyment of their homes and their property values. And the lot at 110 Whispering Pines is adjacent to a single-family residential lot with a home. And with downtown district zoning, a multi-story building, up to four stories, could be built overlooking the home. There was a concern that this type of development could negatively impact the property value of the adjacent home. The primary reasons in favor of the zone change were that it was located within the downtown district boundary with commercial property located nearby along Whispering Pines Avenue. And if the request was granted, the property could be developed uniformly and in unison with the development of the owner's adjacent property at 108 Whispering Pines, thereby possibly creating a higher use of the property.
I'll ask for any citizens that want to specifically talk for or against 110 Whispering Pines. I think we heard your arguments sort of lumped together for 108, 110, for and against. So unless there's somebody else that wants to come up, I have a couple of questions that I could think of right off the top of my head. One is, maybe this isn't fair, but what assurances do we have, Mr. Crinian, that your memory care facility, a one-story memory care facility is what we're gonna end up with? I know we haven't asked you for a PUD or something that's a little more set in stone, so we're listening to what you're telling us, but what kind of assurances?
You know, I think that's a consideration that is given in perpetuity for all property in the city. At what point in time will the use change? And we're now seeing changes that are finally coming that are law needed, changing from farming community to a residential community and to a community that eventually will be able to support itself economically, which it is not able to do so at this time. So the use that's been proposed, that we've seen is, as I said, the memory care facility. What will happen 100 years, I won't be here and I can't tell you. Is there an intent by us to go switch to a gas station? I think we should be able to be beyond that sort of a, sort of a question, okay? If you'd like to see pictures of their facilities, I have a couple with me and I'm happy to share them with you. It's no problem at all. But that is the proposed use of it.
My other question would be to P and Z, not fair probably, but Joe, had you had this presentation a week or so ago and obviously this is new information from Mr. Crinian and the proposed use, how would that have affected your vote for 110, do you think?
I think.
It sounds like, because it sounds like a lot of the votes against were discussing, hey, downtown district allows a four-story building, that obviously would not sit well, doesn't sit well with me next to a residential home across the street from a neighborhood like Timberlake, Timberfield Estates. So I'll let you go ahead.
You were doing a great job, thank you. No, I think it would have an impact. That was one of the, you know, this, these topics, this property, 108 and 110 Whispering Pines, have really actively been discussed at Planning and Zoning, both in moving the boundary and then in the zoning request. So we spent quite a bit of time discussing this property. That seems to be one of the kernel concerns amongst the commissioners, that what, what is the use of this property? There's been at least one other property nearby to this on Whispering Pines that followed a path to get the local homeowners comfortable by coming in with, here's the projected use. I mean, I, obviously I understand no guarantees, but here's the, here's the new buyers, here's the projected use. And that, that got a lot of people comfortable because this is somewhat, I won't call it mixed use, but it's, it's got some commercial on Whispering Pines and some single-family residential. So that's, that's a concern in that mix right there. So what, you know, nobody, you're right, would want that four-story building next door to their property, looking down on them. I, I can't, you know, obviously speak for everyone, but I believe that that would have had a big difference if we thought that that use was credible and they were moving forward with, obviously subject to some changes maybe in the future. But if that was a credible use and a credible plan, then I think that would have made a difference in Planning and Zoning's vote.
As far as 108, P and Z was in favor of the downtown district zoning and as far as 110, they were not in favor. Am I right?
That is, that is correct. 108 is, is right next door adjacent, has been in the downtown district for many years and is next, is bordered by on one side of it a commercial property already.
I got it. I got a question. So if those two are next door, then why the unanimous vote on the one and then the trouble on the other if they're that close?
No, it's fair, it's a very fair question. I guess in, in looking at the properties and many of the commissioners have been out looking at the properties closely, that it was felt like this property, the 108 Whispering Pines, was adjacent to commercial property already. That is, part of the downtown district, had been in the downtown district for many, many years, that that seemed a natural use to convert it to be downtown zoning. Whereas this other property was, was single-family residential, had been outside until just recently, outside the downtown district boundary, and so there was a difference there.
Has anybody heard from the homeowner in two, on 204 Whispering Pines?
Not at Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Okay, great. Here comes somebody now.
I'm John Martin, I live at 204 Whispering Pines.
Okay, good.
We've been there 12 years, my wife and I have both been in the rural state for a number of years. And I think it's definitely gonna hurt our property, but the only reason I didn't mind it was that we'd want to have ours changed to commercial too. Yeah, so it just depends, you know, on what that, so I think it would definitely hurt our property if we couldn't go ahead and have ours converted to commercial also.
Any further questions for me, Planning and Zoning?
Don't both properties, their backyard?
Don't both properties, their backyard is, is up against the downtown district already, right?
Well, 108 has been-
And then, and 110 has that, correct.
It is, both of them are in the downtown district-
It backs up to a big piece of property. It's in the, it's in the downtown district.
Both of them are currently in the downtown district boundary, yes, sir.
Yep.
Correct. 110 is a, is a very long piece of property, and 108's a little bit more square. So they border different properties, is my only point.
I have two questions, but I'm gonna give you a pass here, because I think, I'm gonna ask Mo to answer, because the folks who were against this have brought up two things, and actually, one of them we saw this evening with regard to traffic. I think our traffic study actually addressed that intersection. Is it possible that, because some of those folks are here now, maybe weren't here earlier, is it too big a deal to pull up that piece of the presentation so that we could take a look? Because I honestly can't recall if it was a BB or an AE or, or whatever.
We can definitely do that.
And while we're pulling that up, I would, maybe Aubrey, this will be you. I wanna, I know there's rules and regulations regarding, they also brought up the flooding. And I know that when you have a new development, there are rules about that, and I, could you kind of go over those rules again about such that when someone's developing a new property, they've got a responsibility not to flood their neighbors, so to speak? Can you address that for us?
Yes, these properties, excuse me, are eligible for regional detention, so it's not that they're not providing detention, they just don't have to provide ponds on their property. They will install underground or some kind of catch basins to account for all the water, for the added impervious cover, and route that water to a regional system. They would pay into, pay a fee to the drainage district to be able to purchase that regional detention, so that the drainage district goes towards a regional detention maintenance system.
And so if I remember correctly, these plans have to actually be blessed by the drainage district, so-
Yes.
Those people who are responsible for that actually have to say, yeah, we agree that they have zeroed out their water, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Mo, did I pitch on the spot badly enough?
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Jeff, can you switch to my computer? So, currently, the existing conditions of the intersection during the AM peak, that's early morning rush hour traffic, is a level of service of B, which is pretty good. In the evening, traffic, obviously, these are folks coming home from work from 45 in the Houston area, and it's functioning at a level of service of an E, so-
That's not as desirable.
That's not as desirable. Obviously, we can talk about some improvements to the signal timing, and that's what the traffic engineers recommended. And with those changes, that would bump that afternoon PM peak from an E to a C. So there are modifications that could be made to the intersection. If the proposed use is an Alzheimer's facility, you're not gonna have a lot of daily trips to those type of facilities impacting the roadway network. Not sure what 108 is, but that entire area had been slotted for downtown district in some respects.
But the timing of the lights, now is that something we have to negotiate with Tech Stock? We don't control the, or that's-
Correct. So we don't control the signal there. We would talk with Tech Stock about making a modification to it and give them the data associated with this study to help justify that, that change.
Okay. All right, but we could put some attention on that if this project were to move forward?
Correct.
Such that our residents who are being impacted most directly could be, though there's a light at the end of their tunnel?
No pun intended, but we would do that regardless of this rezoning, but yes, no?
Okay, thank you, Mo. I have no more questions.
That concludes our public hearing. Moving on to item seven, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Kristin Weaver Pearson?
My name is Christine Pearson. Some of you know me, some of you do not. It looks like Kristin, it's completely-
All right, Christine, I know that.
Um, thank you for allowing me this time. I'd like to address the bond. I understand the bond is expensive, and the CAT study numbers exceeded what you expected, but I would seriously encourage each of you to please consider their numbers and give the citizens a chance to fully fund this bond. Mr. Scott, I'm very glad to hear that you're concerned with the responsibility of the council when it comes to these numbers. They are extraordinarily large. That being said, if you lowball it, I really, really fear you're not gonna have another bite at this apple. And you're solving not just a flooding problem, you're solving a current problem. When we flooded, our house backed up to Clear Creek, and the current was so strong it forced open the back doors. We were there when it occurred. Our son was 13 years old, we evacuated in the morning, he left by boat. At the end of our street, his boat capsized in 15 to 20 feet of water, and he held on to a light pole to survive. By spending the right amount of money on this bond, you're going to solve more than just flooded streets and flooded houses. You will save lives, but I encourage you to do the homework necessary to get the numbers right. Spending the correct amount of money on the front end will more than pay for itself on the back end. But this project cannot be halfway done. Please do it once, please do it right, and never do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Lovely?
Thank you for a second opportunity tonight. My notes are not as clear because they're reflecting from what happened earlier tonight. As a member of the Citizens Advisory Team on Drainage, I'll start by saying, maybe for the others, that it was very frustrating to not be able to tell you what work we did, to share with you the data we collected. We've had limited exposure, and none of us are sitting where you are, so that was hard for us. But let me say, we are citizens, and we prefer lower taxes. We did not come together to raise taxes as much as we can. We have heard innuendos several times in several places in this community, including here, that there was, we didn't have a top number. We tried and fought as hard as we could to keep the number as low as possible. We weren't trying to inflate that number. But we looked at this not as a blank check, but we, we knew we needed to solve it once and for all. That citizens don't want to fund it now and fund it again 10 years from now. They wanna do it once and do it right. This is the one real chance to solve catastrophic flooding. There were members of the subcommittee on our team, so we did have access to that information, and we built on that. We found no property lists or pricing for buyouts in the subcommittee works, so we examined maps, we got government records, we went to other resources and sources, everything we could find to come up with numbers that we could average out and come up with figures. There wasn't a number that we just added 18 million to because we liked to add money to our taxes. It was based on facts that we found. We did not include already-owned properties. We did not include things that government or the drainage already considered. We knew better than that. We believe it's important to authorize the full funding, and if we find other sources and we get better partners, and we have bigger partner shares from others, well then you don't have to sell those bonds, you don't have to issue the bonds. But if you don't have that available, you'll have to go back and ask for it again. And if you don't get it, what then? A half-finished project that doesn't save 1,000 houses, maybe only saves a few. The inclusion of planning for green space or parkland was important to us. We believe that's part of what provides an asset to the majority of the city for the majority of the time. There are only few days where we get flooding and need to use that land for drainage. It is the role of the city to provide that to the citizens. Think about that, 10 miles of green space, and you follow the creek, and you follow the curves and bends. It's 10 miles of green space that would be available to everyone. That's an asset that people are willing to pay something for, and that is part of your responsibility. I and other members of the CAT team welcome you to find us, seek us out in the community, ask us questions, ask for clarification, don't guess at what we did or what we know or what we don't know. We will willingly tell you what we don't know. We've worked hard, and we wish you were privy to all the discussions we had, because I think you'd be proud of this small group of citizens and know we tried our best to represent all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We are proud of all the work that you guys did, I'll say that. Connie Raddesso?
First of all, I want to say thank you for the discussion in the workshop earlier. It was very refreshing, and I want to say, or she stole my thunder, how frustrating it is to sit out there and not be able to respond to anything. But I did want to say, I served on the CAT for both drainage and the parks, and then Phil, my husband, served for drainage and facilities. And one thing I observed when this all started was it seemed like everybody that came in, no matter which CAT subcommittee they were, or group they were in, they all knew that drainage was the number-one priority in Friendswood. And as a result of that, everyone was conservative in what they recommended, what they thought that we should suggest to you for bonds. When we came together as a joint group, Streets, for instance, only had Black Hawk. The facilities, despite having a majority of their members, were senior citizens, had the community center at the bottom of their priority list. Parks decided to focus only on what we had. The only thing that I think we really added was the Clear Creek Green Belt, that we're calling it, for lack of a better name. Sorry, this is also a response to earlier. Drainage, I did want to say, well, she already said that, so I don't need to say that, we did look at the buyout numbers. And also, the idea of the park came at the end of the first meeting the CAT groups had together, where we were presented the information from the Drainage Subcommittee, and at the very end of it, the presenter said, and if you want to turn it into a park, that'd be great, too. So that's where that came from. So everyone was very conservative. One of the things about drainage that I want to hit real quick, if we fix the drainage, we don't have to have escape routes like Friendswood Parkway. We don't have to have shelters like the community center. So why, when we know drainage will pass, which is what you seem to have all said earlier, are we throwing in a community center and throwing in a street, a parkway, into one that you know will pass despite it only being seed money, which was, I think, 3 million of what was total of 15 million for the Parkway? So why are we throwing that in there? That concerns me. I understand it has something to do with drainage, but I don't think it needs to go into drainage. And I don't think we're gonna get a second chance at this if we don't vote it all now. I probably have more to say, but I can't think what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, did you want to come back up, or you got to say your piece? Well, we don't get to ask you questions during this. Tracy?
I want to get my name. I'll try.
Okay. Tracy Dinn?
Thank you for the refresher. I did miss the beginning of this meeting. Our neighborhood backs up to Cowards Creek, which is right next to Clear Creek. If we can, like you were talking about, the Clear Creek Belt Parkway, that would be awesome for us to have. We've already lost 1774 Park. That has been converted to drainage for the Harris County District. We would like to see something like that on our side to mitigate the floodwaters. However, if the properties that we were looking at earlier, if they're commercialized, that's gonna be an impact that you might not consider. It might have easement issues. So yes, we would like you to reconsider. The drainage is a big problem for us. The bridge was underwater, there was a stuck vehicle there for days. We could not escape from our neighborhood either. We were also boated out during the floods, so things like that are very big concerns for us.
Thank you. Item eight, city managers' report.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I will keep this brief. As we wrap up the month of June, we're now into July. We're starting the Movies in the Parks series on July 12th. This will occur every Friday night at Centennial Park at the Evelyn Newman Amphitheater, in which they will show family-friendly movies. This month coming up, we have Disney's Mary Poppins Returns, Disney's Ralph Breaks the Internet, Disney's Incredibles 2, How to Train Your Dragon, and Aquaman, which will be featured at the pool here in Stevenson Park. Movies start typically around dusk and run the length of the film. Each movie has a sponsorship from folks such as Mary Queen Catholic Church, Stanfield Properties, Hometown Bank of Friendswood, Gimme a Bark, KFB, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, and our own Friendswood Rotary. This Thursday, it's already been mentioned during the mayor and council comments, will be our 124th celebration of the Fourth of July here in the city of Friendswood. It will start with a parade about 10 o'clock in the morning from Heritage and Friendswood Drive and go south to Stevenson Park, in which case it will culminate in a day program with vendors and other activities at the park for families. Those festivities will conclude around 3:00, so our folks and volunteers can quickly transition to Centennial Park for the evening festivities, in which we'll have Molly and the Ringwolds, Ringwolds, perform 80's cover music, and then fireworks extravaganza starting about 9:20 in the evening. There will be no parking at Centennial Park. There will be shuttle services provided at Friendswood United Methodist Church off of Friendswood Drive, as well as the high school off of Greenbrier. Recently, at the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers, our own Katie Blanchard was awarded a tie for third place in the project for considering marketing in the least expensive category, as far as least amount of dollars utilized. This is Katie Blanchard's third Tammy O. Award in the last three years. The entry was the flapjack mascot costume that was handmade by Katie herself. So congratulations to Katie and everybody else that was involved in that effort. Our own EMS received, and police department and the VFD received an award for their activities this past year related to the life-saving measures that took place with a young child, telecommunications officer Lundry Reynal, telecommunications officer Ashley Hempel, EMT David McCord, officer Sean McCaffrey, officer Benny, officer Rostrum, assistant EMS chief Roy Hunter, and EMS captain Blake Blazell, paramedic Andrew Chalk, and EMT Mark Lavelle all received recognition for their efforts associated with it, and we thank them for their life-saving activities, both on that day as well as any day of the year in Friendswood. I mentioned last month that two of our buyout applications have received favorable approval from FEMA. That process has moved forward. It's not a quick process, but it has moved forward. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is a 75-25 grant, includes 26 homes for acquisition and demolition ultimately. And then our flood mitigation application to, through the Texas Water Development Board was approved, and that included four homes. Those were strategic, those were the ones located on, on Clear Creek and one on Cowards Creek, and those are at 100%. We are nearing a resolution with FEMA on our Deepwood facility, so that we can get that old Public Works and Parks building out of the floodway at the confluence of Cowards Creek and Clear Creek. And this wasn't on the agenda previously, but we received word that our efforts to get reevaluated, evaluated for scenic city. We were previously a bronze, we were hoping to get to a silver. We've shot past silver, we've shot past gold, and we're now gonna be recognized as platinum. So, our folks in community development parks and public works did such an outstanding job that they're gonna feature us as a, as an example for other cities to emulate. So, great job. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to ordinances. Item 15, ordinance number T 2019-24, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 1.7243 acres located at 108 Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from single-family residential to downtown district.
Second.
Motion's in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Ordinance number T 2019-25, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 1.8367 acres located at 110 Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from single-family residential to downtown district.
Second.
Motion's in a second. Any further questions?
We'll make mention, earlier this evening, we found out the use on 10 would be an Alzheimer's or memory care facility. Such a use does require a specific use permit in addition to the downtown district, which would further limit that to that specific use. Not necess, you can still act on the downtown district designation tonight if you're so inclined, but they would still have to come back to council with another bite at the apple for the specific use permit.
All right. All in favor? Ordinance number T 2019-26, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract of land containing 0.7471 acres located at 17158 Blackhawk Boulevard, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from neighborhood commercial to neighborhood commercial slash specific use permit to allow next use 8131 religious organizations. Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Right, backing you up on this, but I think we're done. Adjourned. Thank you.